On mobile.
On an iPad.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Norfolk Planning Board. It is Thursday, October 18th. It is approximately 7:45 PM. And I'd like to make everyone aware that this meeting is being video and audio taped. We have several items of business here this evening. The first item of business involves the preserve at Keene Pond, and it's a request to establish bond and release of lots 18 and 28, and request for bond reduction for Castle Road, Station 0.00, and 4.00. So, I see Mr. Weddleton here this evening. So, would you like to come up, John, and discuss with the board? Okay, why don't you just grab a microphone, please?
First, for the reduction of the bond for Station 0 to 400 on Castle Road, we had completed detention basin trees planted approximately a year and a half ago, and reviewed, and you have the paperwork from the Department of Public Works lowering that bond in the amount of $6,800. And he's listed the new amount, which would be $27,796.
Okay. And it has been decided that the DPW would be establishing the proper bond amount for the development, so Bob, maybe if you would, take a microphone and just explain what you've done.
The first thing John's requested there is just the bond reduction on a bond already established that we put together, you know, some time back. So, his request was just to get a reduction for the amount for the planting of the shrubs. We went out and inspected it. The work is done. The plants are thriving. That cost us $6,800. Just subtract that from the original bond, and all that work is in front of you. So, there's the original bond, then there's a revised bond. So, you just subtract 68 from that, and that's the first part of John's request. The amount remaining would be $27,000. I don't have my glasses here, but...
796, 27,796.
Exactly. So, it's...that's just the math for you.
When were the trees planted?
Year and a half ago.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to check and make sure they made it through a full season, yeah.
Are they trees or just shrubs?
They should be. Street trees, right?
No, he's talking now just about the shrubs.
Oh, okay.
The trees are still in the bond. This number gets reduced, and if you did the math, and you took 68 off of that, you'd end up with that. But not exactly.
It's the next page.
You're right. That's original. Come forward. Now, come forward.
Yeah. Reverse order.
Oh, oh, okay. It is reversed order. Got it.
Oh, the contingents are changed.
I took it off, including the...
I appreciate that, because I can't say that an engineer doesn't know how to do math better than me.
So, these would be two separate motions, correct?
I think so.
Any other questions?
Yes, they are separate.
Yeah. Any other questions as far as Castle Road?
Nope.
I'm going to move to reduce the existing bond for Castle Road by $6,800, bringing the new bond amount to $27,796.
Which stations are those?
0 to...
To 4.
0.00 to 4.00.
A second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
If I could show you, Mr. Chairman, the lot layout for this new bond, just to let you better understand what I'm looking for. I also want to make sure that I don't have to come back in two weeks because of an open meeting conflict, but...I have asked for a...I was initially asking to release lots number 28 and 18.
Mm-hmm.
Was conferring with Bob McGee, and I actually left Tom's office a message this morning. I was told that I should rather than just...since there wasn't frontage here, I should bring the bond all...the road and the bond all the way down to 200 feet down Wright Farm Road. So, the release that I'm asking for, or the bond I'm asking for includes this 700 feet of roadway to finish up this whole section. Unfortunately, when I sent Betsy the memo two days ago, I was asking to release these two lots.
Mm-hmm.
Now that I'm coming down to here, I added these two lots into the plan, into the request, which wasn't part of my initial request. So, all I can offer on this is that as far as not giving two days' notice, and if I have to come back, that's fine, but there's no newer butters for these two lots as compared to these two. Jerry Walsh and the MBTA are the only butters for the parcel. So, where I was bringing the road down here just to free up this lot, by doing that, it freed up these two also.
Is there a...an a butter notification for the release of lots?
No.
No, so I don't know why it would matter.
Well, as far as the open meeting thing, where I didn't tell Betsy initially there were four lots being released, and now I'm asking for four, unfortunately, the bond is all wrapped up into the whole four lots, the whole section. It's one bond.
Does the section of road on Castle go all the way to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah. So, we're going to be finishing this next year, so...
And the bond goes down to the cul-de-sac?
Mm-hmm. And down to Wright Farm Road, to here, correct. So, this one wasn't able to be released just with this frontage, so we got to bring it around the corner.
So, 0.00 and 4.00 is effectively the entire...
No, that's the old bond. The new bond we're looking for is Station 900 Castle Road to, I think it's 1350, and then on Wright Farm...
1339, sorry.
And then on Wright Farm Road, I think we're looking for Station 1300 to... Which is this section right here. And that's all wrapped up into one bond.
The other bond reduction is this part, right?
Yeah, that's this basin over here, correct. Yeah.
So, it's from where to where? The 00 to 4.00?
That's from here...
There, okay.
To here.
Okay.
That was a bond from a couple of years ago. That's the one that was reduced.
It's a second, it's two separate actions. New one's starting at nine.
Two separate actions.
The new one is going from...the new one's going from here. Lot 27 is released. The new one's going from here around to here for these four lots.
And as far as this section here?
That's already been bonded and released.
Okay.
Yeah.
Like Andrew had mentioned, even...that's just the location. We're just looking to release these little shrubs here. Nothing to do with what's going on in the street. That's one thing that you just voted and approved. Now, John, on a second request, is looking for a cost to complete. So, there's a calculation in there for $75,000 plus to bring that up to acceptance standards.
Right. So, you know, let me just explain the situation, make sure we're all on the same page. I'm not sure I'm hearing any opposition to the plan, but I appreciate you making it, John, is the fact that, you know, in terms of open meeting and the agenda that's been published, now we'd be going outside of that agenda if we were to, in fact, take action on two additional lots. So, is your preference for us to take action on two lots and potentially come back for two?
You can't, because the bond is one number.
Okay.
Can they vote to establish the bond tonight and then release the lots on the 30th?
We'd have to ask them.
Or could we vote to establish the bond, release two lots tonight, and then you come back and release the other two two weeks later?
The numbers all go together.
There is no bond amount for two lots, though.
Well, you're just posting extra money.
Yeah, that's all it is. It's just extra money.
You can take your money.
Well, I don't know if I trust you to post extra money.
Maybe a point well taken. Now, are there street trees already planted in this section? Is that why they're not on the bond here? Unless I'm missing it on this one. Is there...are there two of these also?
Yes.
No. I don't see any street trees listed on this bond.
Tree planting.
There's 30 trees.
30 trees.
Where am I missing this?
What's the bottom line? Is it 75,000?
You want it 75?
Oh, 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 okay. I see it now, yeah. All right. Never mind. I take that back.
I know your affinity for street trees, but yes, that is there.
And concrete bounds are underneath it.
Well, I guess, you know, I'll look to our consultants here. I mean, is this in fact the case that...
It's not. You're just accepting a bond that is sufficient for the completion of these roads, station to station, and in the same or a separate motion, you can release two lots. You'll know at the next meeting that you already have enough money posted to release two additional lots, so...
If it's a conflict with open meeting between...well, the bank won't sign off unless I get the four released, so it just murky's things up. If it's cleaner, and if you think it's a violation of open meeting, I'll just come back to the next meeting and do it all at once.
It strikes me as a minor administrative matter.
Absolutely. It's within the scope, basically, of what was on the agenda, so two more...
Yeah, that's the way either...
There have been other subdivisions where the board has withheld or increased lots being released. I think it's a normal administrative action, would be my recommendation.
The same with butters, and you don't have to identify the butters anyways.
Well, Andrea brought up a point, but my recollection is that because this is a continuation of Castle Road, is this the one where the Cape Cod berm was continued to the cul-de-sac?
Yeah.
Because it's a continuation of Castle Road.
So, it shows up as top course.
Yeah.
So, here, in terms of...
Includes the mono berm.
No, she was wondering why there was no curbing in here. And I remember that this is the continuation of Castle Road, and it was allowed to continue the Cape Cod berm, because Castle Road's all Cape Cod berm.
So, I have a follow-up question. You said something about it's not any different to butters. Nobody different would have been notified if these two lots were posted as part of the hearing? I don't...
That's why I mentioned that. It's the same two butters.
Nobody was notified on any of them.
There's not a formal butter notification.
It's just an administrative action by the board. There was no notification to anybody.
Right, but still, if a butters had referenced our agenda...
Correct.
And seen that they weren't abutting these two particular lots, that could cause some concern.
Yeah, and that's the essence of the concern, and in a case like this, I would defer to folks like Gino and Tom based on their experience and...
But it's not advertised.
So...
The agenda is...
This is still...
The agenda is posted.
Yeah, it is.
That's why, Jeff, I had mentioned, if somebody was to read the agenda, the same with butters that would be looking for the two lots initially requested, one of which is the MBTA, the other is Jerry Walsh, they're the same two that would be looking at the four lots. So, that's why I mentioned that.
Well, you know, in a case like this, you know, I'll accept the recommendations of Mr. Houston and Mr. Carlucci, and so unless I hear objections from the board, proceed on that. You're not comfortable with that?
That's fine. You can get me...you can get the majority without me, so...
Well, that's not...
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the bond.
If we have a member of the board that is uncomfortable, then my suggestion is that we defer the action. Okay?
Yep, that's good.
Sorry.
It's okay.
All right.
Okay.
John's used to the board turning him down on things.
That's fine.
I think for the minimum two weeks is worth playing that impulse.
So, that being the case, we...I'm open to...let's see, we...we've been working towards a public hearing on the 30th, Betsy, but I know that that's going to get delayed till the 15th.
We have a meeting scheduled for the 30th, because we have a public hearing for the Gunspur Recreation Land at night.
So, would that be acceptable to you?
Yeah.
John?
Yes.
So, then we'll defer this action to that meeting on the 30th, okay?
I think maybe the guidance the board could give is that the board accepts the amount that the Public Works Director has established for the work, so that Mr. Weddleton can arrange with his bank to have the proper paperwork built around that figure.
Okay, we can certainly do that. So, in terms of establishing the bond amount, do I have a motion, and the motion should include reference to the station markers?
Okay, I'll make a motion to set the bond for the preserve at Keene Pond for stations...is it 900 to 1355 and 1300 to 1565? Is that what it is? Okay. For stations 900 to 1355, as well as stations...
Castle Road.
What's that?
On Castle Road.
On Castle Road, right. As well as stations 1300 to 1565 on Wright's Farm Road, and set the bond at $75,595.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anything else, John? Is that...okay, okay. Thank you. Okay, next item of business... is a public hearing for 32 Frederickson Road. It's an estate lot, which requires a special permit. So, Michelle, if you would...
Notice is hereby given that in accordance with Mass. General Law Section 40A in the Norfolk Zoning Bylaws E2H, that a public hearing will be held on Thursday, October 18th, 2012, at 7:40 PM in Room 124 at the Norfolk Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Massachusetts, relative to an estate lot application for property located at 32 Frederickson Road in Norfolk, Mass., 02056. The applicants are Robert and Rita Shepherd, and the property is located in the R1 zoning district. Reference assessor's map 13, Block 46, Lot 37, showing a 217,822 square foot parcel. Copy of the plan, application, and other miscellaneous information are available for public inspection in the Office of the Norfolk Planning Board during regular office hours.
Okay, thank you, Michelle. So, who is here this evening to...okay, would you like to come up? And, you know, either you can stand, or if you'd like to pull up a chair, you know, as long as you have a microphone.
Well, I think I'm volume enough.
No, no, you need a microphone. Oh, good. I was wondering where this was.
And we'll set up your plan here.
Okay.
What happened to our easel?
We could post it on the bulletin board, doesn't it?
We could do that. Want to do that?
Yeah, I'm just trying to look quickly. In summary, we have an 18-acre lot on Frederickson Road, and it has a total of 18 acres. Several years ago, we purchased a back access driveway to it, and I can show you graphically...you can pass this around. This is the shape of the lot, and the orange is the newly acquired driveway. What we want to do is simply carve off five acres as a lot, that's all. And under the conditions of Frederickson Road, it needs to be an estate lot. We made it five acres, and the application is exactly for that. A five acre, a single five acre state lot. Access would be at the very end of Frederickson Road.
Well, there's 18 acres there, and you're only having a five acre estate lot?
I am cutting the 18 acres up, so there'll be a five acre section and a 13 acre section.
Can you put in two estate lots?
No, there's no two estate lots. There's a single estate lot.
Where's the...where's the...is that...where's the road?
That's Frederickson? The access road.
Okay.
Leading into the parcel. This is the 13 acres, the five acres.
So, the access of the 13 acres is farther down Frederickson?
Oh, so you're talking about the access to the back part is the lower driveway. Is that what you're saying?
The driveway at the...
The one that's in orange?
That's correct.
Oh, okay. I got it now. I was wondering...I thought that that was what you were adding on, that you were going in from that lower one, and I thought that you were going to be, you know, cutting five acres off there, wondering what you were going to do with the other 13.
No. The only thing missing on that drawing is a line that delineates the five acres, but it's at the south end of that lot. It's where that orange driveway is, and it's clearly marked on this drawing here.
It's...now that I suggested that the drawing go that far away...
You want it back?
Can you...can you just...can you just point out which houses you're going behind with the five acres? Okay, so...
This is the line.
Okay. So, 1, 2...
Overneath 5.
Behind those five houses. Okay.
Oh, he's got another one.
I have a little larger scale sandbag.
This is a better one. I like this one.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys keep that one.
I did submit one that was similar to this.
Yeah.
Do we have one?
Yes, she just said so.
These are the adjoining houses. In fact, one of the neighbors is here. John owns...John Weddleton owns this piece. Neighbor owns this piece. So, these are all the houses. This is Frederickson Road. This is the very end of Frederickson Road.
And this road doesn't exist, obviously, right?
And this is the road in orange that's on that map.
And what's key for us, Mr. Shepherd, is that the driveway is actually inside the end of Frederickson Road. It's not an extension of Frederickson Road.
No, it's not. It's on Frederickson Road.
Or the end of Frederickson.
It's on the end of Frederickson Road. That's right.
But the...this is the five acres from the lower, orange one.
No, that's the orange, and this is the piece. This is the five acres.
Correct.
So, you own the land where the driveway...
And how do you access the back lot?
Through the driveway here.
The red driveway here. Oh, okay.
But that's currently...what's in red is currently what I've owned for 30 years in Norfolk.
Congratulations.
Okay? I'm trying to sell it. Do you know anybody wants to buy it?
The only issue that I can see is that if you're putting a five acre parcel here...
Yes.
You're going to restrict yourself to another estate lot back here. You won't be able to...because you're limited to a 500-foot cul-de-sac if you wanted to put one on here, and so the most you can get in here is another 500-foot cul-de-sac. You don't have any other egress from this to put in any kind of a subdivision.
Not true.
We're not trying to do that.
Oh, I'm just warning you about the future.
But let me explain this. This driveway is 300 feet long, and it could, in fact, go another 200 feet.
Right.
Right? So, that for the future discussion, if you will, if this were a conforming road, which it's not, if this were a conforming road, I could put a subdivision in through here. I could apply for subdivision.
That's correct.
I can't do that. So, this is only 300 feet long. I can go another 150 feet at least, put a cul-de-sac here, and a future buyer could, in fact, put houses up here. I'm aware of that. By splitting...
As long as they have 200 feet of frontage.
Yeah, so two houses.
This is R1, so isn't that 150?
Yeah, this is R1.
This is R1.
Yeah, all right.
This is R1.
This is R1.
You probably still would only get two houses in that...
Yeah. To us, it's irrelevant.
Well, that's not my concern. I simply, for economic purposes, of splitting off five acres, that gives me a parcel of land to sell here and a home and land to sell here.
Okay. Why don't we give Gino an opportunity? Gino, this is your comments here, correct?
Yes.
So, why don't we do that?
Okay.
Because that might be enlightening for all of us. So, why don't you take us through it, Gino?
Okay, going through the criteria for an estate lot, they're required to have three times the minimum, which would be $90,000. It has $217,000, so it far exceeds that. Needs 50 feet of frontage. It has 91, over 91. All buildings shall be located a minimum of 50 feet from the property lines. They have a proposed house location shown that does meet that. And I said in my comments, I recommend that a 50-foot setback be shown on the plan all around the perimeter, but it does meet that setback. Next, it's required to meet sections E1C. It meets...it has the frontage. It has the front setback line. It has the required...well, it has a required circle in excess of what's required. Since the frontage requirement is only 50 feet, the required circle is only 50 feet, and you showed a required circle for a conventional lot, which is okay. You more than meet it. So, what else? The contiguous buildable lot area, in the case of if there had been wetlands on the lot, needs to be at least twice the minimum size, but there are no wetlands on the lot, so it has...it meets that requirement. Then, the requirements say that the planning board must make two findings. One, that there's safe access for public safety vehicles and personnel to the dwelling unit, and that the intersection of the driveway with the public way be in the best location available. They do show the driveway. I haven't been on the site, but being at the end of the road, and I'm sure there's not a lot of traffic there, I don't know what the site distances are. Normally, site distances are shown on the plan, and then I noted that it's a dead end on a...well, it's on a road that exceeds the dead end length, which Mr. Shepherd has already pointed out. And also that it will have a less...the development as an estate law will have a less adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood and protection of open space and natural resources and historic structures than other development options available to the applicant. Probably the primary comment is that utilities are required to be underground, which, not that they're not, but it doesn't...usually the plans will say utilities to be underground. So, I would recommend that that be added to the plan. Then, there was some confusion, at least on my part, on the map block and lot number of 37. 13 and 46 are okay, but Lot 37...the conservation agent's comments also seem to indicate that that was the wrong...the wrong lot number.
I was...
That's got to be a mistake, because the lot...this is being carved from an existing lot.
Right.
So, what's referenced here is the existing lot.
Lot 37, and it's 18 acres.
And I don't know where the conservation came up with that other number. I have no idea.
The other number being?
38 acres.
The 38 acres is...I put that in there because the assessor's map, which I...the paper copy of the assessor's map that I have, which is an older version, admittedly, I think it's five or six years old, although it doesn't sound like the...it shows 38 acres. I don't know why.
Where?
On Lot 37. Map 13, Block 46, Lot 37.
And he's owned it for 30 years.
My assessor's map is not 30 years old, that's for sure.
That might have been a typo from 18 to 38.
It might have been.
This, actually, the outlined area in red, except for the driveway, has been on the record books for...since 1940s.
So, she...so where...Mr. Shepherd, when you said you thought that the conservation agent was getting it wrong, it was her note number six?
Yes, it was.
That map 1346, Lot 163? Where's that? That's where he's questioning. Where would that lot be?
I don't know. I don't know offhand.
Do you want me to get the assessor's map?
Yeah, because she's...
That would help.
Because she's saying this...she's saying this...this is the proposed house, and this is a created lot, so it has to be...
From an existing...
It has to be from an existing lot.
Exactly. So, we're confused.
And this is the existing lot.
Do you own another house on that street?
No.
Well, we own on the 18 acres.
Right, right.
That's our primary.
Yeah, okay.
You're still not recognizing, this is lot 163 versus lot 37.
I have no idea what that's referring to. I haven't looked at the assessor's map, but it just, logic tells me that this is an existing lot.
At the end of-
Oh, no, I understand. We're just trying to-
At the very end.
Confusion.
We'll see the assessor's map.
I jumped ahead, because it says, you know, okay, because over here, when you got the topo map, there's a wetland line, and she's, people are saying there may be construction within 50 feet.
Yeah, the driveway is shown to be less than 50 feet from the wetland line. That was the conservation-
One boundary. Yeah, this boundary, yeah, but the driveway-
No, the driveway's up here.
That's right, but the driveway is not. The boundary is.
Yeah, where's the-
Again, this is just a proposed, we're not building a house.
What she's seeing, what she's seeing and what Gino was referring to, these are proposed regrading. This is, in order to put the driveway in, you have to move the earth around it to flatten it out. So she's saying this work, now the work associated with the driveway, it gets close to the wetland line.
I read this, that the buffer zone, presumed 50-foot frontage, undisturbed buffer zone would retain. That's section one, under five.
Presume 50 feet of undisturbed, right?
Yeah.
Right, and so this is, right there, the wetland line that she's, it's right-
Well, we don't know, because this has not been linear. She also indicated-
Well, that's an assumption, right? Approximate limit. So if that's the approximate limit, even though you go plan, you go right up to your disturbance.
Yeah.
And that's what they're saying, that there's a 50-foot undisturbed buffer. So if you can move your driveway-
Right.
Oh, where's 163?
To the other edge, try to get away from it.
It is showing as 163 on this map.
There what?
The assessor's map, the new version of the assessor's map is showing it as 163, as opposed to 37.
And it's the big 18 acres.
Which lot is it?
That's a new map.
It doesn't show the acres.
I haven't found Frederickson yet. Oh, there's Frederickson.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, this is the one right here. This is the one right here.
So the Concom is referring to 163, which is what's on the assessor's map. The applicant is referring to 37, which is what's on their plan, and that's what, the public hearing, that's what we posted.
And that's a stamped plan.
Yeah. I mean, it's-
Eighty-six point 163, right?
Survey plan.
Forty-six, 163.
Is that 46, or?
The line goes right through that kind of-
Yeah, it's supposed to be 46. Supposed to be block 46, 163.
Oh, okay.
At the registry of deeds, it reads, yeah. Maybe it changed over the years. I don't know.
But the main point, that the designation is not as important as the fact that you're splitting a lot in two, but the other remaining part of the lot is not shown on the plan. When you go to, so that's, that becomes a new lot also-
Right.
When you go to the registry of deeds.
So what the board would have to do, assuming that this gets approved, then that would-
Two sheets.
Then the remaining lot will have to get approved as well.
Does it have to get approved, or does it, because it's a previously, so one at the top of the floor?
Well, it's all one. It'll be all one plan that's approved. The estate lot is approved, but at the same time, it creates-
A new lot.
A new lot.
Right.
Two new lots.
Which gets approved.
They're both new lots.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. So they both get approved simultaneously. Is that what you're saying?
Yes. It's kind of like an amoeba.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, sure.
It's not that the second, it's not that the existing lot needs approval. It's that, it's that a second lot, the remaining lot becomes its own lot by virtue of an approval over here. So it just has to be shown. They just has to be, has to be delineated on a plan that gets to the registry.
And then I have to file with the registry.
Right.
Yeah.
Correct.
Okay.
You guys are pretty good at this.
Is that all?
Okay. So, so you have some additional business to complete with conservation, correct?
No.
No. So they've made some statements here.
That was their view of it, if you asked.
They don't need to get conservation approval now, but when they build, when they build that, they will need to get conservation approval. So they run the risk of conservation saying, "We don't want that disturbed." I don't know that that'll happen. I can't see, but it's, you know, it would be at your own risk. If you're gonna apply to conservation, you need their approval as well.
These are, these are their thoughts on this, this new lot, but we're just here asking you to approve this split, this creation of a new lot from an existing 18-acre lot. That's what we're here to ask. We have, the only reason that you show a house here and a leach field is because the town application for an estate lot requires I show them.
Correct.
That there's room.
And I have no intention of building. I simply want a second lot to settle.
Well, you have to demonstrate that you, that you can set it 50 feet away from every property line, and that's what you have to demonstrate to us.
So this is it.
Okay. So in terms of the Concom, that's a future consideration, potential issue for you. In terms of planning and this question of the assessor's map versus the action that we've been requested to take, we're referring to two different parcels, correct, in terms of, you know, how this has been introduced versus?
I don't think so.
Well, we know it's the same parcel, but just administratively, is this a problem?
They're numbered different on the application.
It should be straightened out, yeah.
Yeah.
And they, they need to revise the plan anyway to show the whole, the whole rest of the lot. So in the meantime, they could maybe check with the assessor's office.
Wait a minute. Let me, you're asking me to submit now a total plot plan that has this as part of it, including the remainder of the lot?
We can't approve this unless it's been split off as its own lot.
That's when we go back to that plan over there.
That's why-
You have to break them up. There's two separate lots before we can go in here and say, "Okay, you can get approval for an estate lot."
But I can't break them up unless you approve it.
No, you have to show the whole thing on one map, on one plan.
Okay.
Yeah.
Reduce the scale so we can see the whole thing.
This, and you may end up recording two plans.
Yeah.
You got two, you got two plans here. So this one, at this scale, shows us topography, which is really useful. That one can, can get blown up to a bigger scale so that you can show the entire property you own? That one can show everything.
Let me get this straight. You want me to present you with a plot of the entire 18-acre lot?
And let's, what is actually required, Gino? What is actually required? So in terms of a topographical, et cetera, what's required for the special permit?
For the special permit, I would say that topographical plan is okay. For recording at the registry of deeds, it doesn't have to show topography, or even the house location or any of that, just the boundaries, but, you know, totally surveyed with distances and bearings and all that kind of stuff.
And that's what we submitted.
And that's this one.
But it doesn't have the entire lot.
Yeah, that one at a larger scale.
How can it be submitted to the registry of deeds if it hasn't been separated off as a separate lot?
Well, that's what I'm saying.
The special permit approves a separate lot.
Yeah, but, so that's a second action that we have to do, is to approve the two lots.
Well, you can do it simultaneously.
Yeah, but that's a second act, that's something separate that we-
So you, correct. So you accept the fact that you need to come back to the board, okay? There's some additional work that you need to do to get this in a form, you know, so that the board can take the necessary action, okay? I don't think I'm hearing any opposition, okay, but there's some additional administrative work and perhaps the delineation in terms of the parcels that has to be done in order for us to take action.
Okay. You read the list of requirements from the state law, and we met every one of them.
Yes.
Right down the line.
Yeah.
Okay. So if I follow the rules and the regulations by the town of Norfolk, we've met, we've met it, right? We've met all of the requirements.
Basically, yes.
Okay, fine. That being said, you would like an additional piece of information, which, to my understanding, is the entire 18 acres with this being shown as a separate second lot.
It has to-
What I need from you-
If we are going to approve it, it has to be a separate legal lot. We can't approve it saying, "Oh, you're gonna split it off."
It can't be a separate legal lot until you approve it.
Why is that?
You have to demonstrate. You have to demonstrate it.
Okay. Gino, please express, I don't want to ask the applicant to do anything more than that's required.
Right.
So please tell us what needs to be done.
That's missing.
That sheet is fine as it is. You don't want a second sheet.
In fairness to the board, this is the first opportunity we've had to look at this project.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you think we've been stewing over this?
We sent you ten copies a month ago, so I-
Oh, oh, no, this is our first, first time seeing it.
Tell me what you want.
That's what we're trying to do.
Gino's telling you exactly what you need.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, just like this, this has the right information for this lot, the bearings and distances, but the remaining part does not have that. It doesn't have the entire boundary, and it doesn't have bearings and distances on it, except for where it affuts the five acres. So all you need is this information on this lot.
And it doesn't have any-
In one drawing?
In one drawing.
Okay, so the drawing scale will be such that it fits into this size plan?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Chances are, that's not gonna be hard to do.
No, it's not hard to do. I'm not gonna have it planned today, but I want to make clear is, you simply want the entire 18 acres with this line shown and all the measurements, the key measurements on the lot. Is that correct?
Yes. And just one, just one kind of advice is, I would put lot designations on there, so it'll make it easier when you draft a deed. You can refer to lot, you know, lot one and lot two, or lot A and lot B, whatever you want to call it, but like this, it's just kind of, it's a lot, but it's not, it has no name.
Well, this was provided and generated because they required the distances to these houses.
And you don't need that for this, what I'm talking about.
Well, no, but that's why this was generated. That's why it was generated, because when I showed this initially for a draft approval, that's what was missing, is the distances to these houses. That's required on the plan, or at least referred to anywhere.
It might be helpful if the board authorized Mr. Carlucci to speak directly to Landmark Engineering, and he can probably convey the specific technical requirements, then they can check back with you and make sure you're okay with it.
But I would have no objection to have Gino talk directly to him.
Okay.
Okay. So we'll call it lot A and lot B. This will be lot B. Lot A is the first existing one, and this is lot B, and it will all be on one drawing with all of the numbers.
Okay. So we're meeting again on the 30th, so if that's something that you'd like to do.
Yes.
So if you'd like to get on the agenda.
We would.
Please.
Okay.
Okay.
Now, where this is a public hearing, you know, we would set a time, okay? So it's very formal when there's a public hearing, so that'd be a continuation of the public hearing. So what does that look like, that even?
We have 7:40, the Gumps Farm, and then we've got lot releases for Keene Pond. We didn't set a time for that.
So when this goes on the agenda, it goes down as under two different requests, one of which is to split off the lot, and the other one is to create the estate lot, right? Right, Gino?
I think you can do it in one.
Right, it can all be done at one time. I'm just wondering, now, what are they gonna call it? Is it moving lot lines, or?
Why isn't it just creation of a special, creation of a-
Creation of a state law.
Of a state law.
It shows, the plan shows the remaining land, that's all.
Oh, okay.
So Gumps is, what time? 7:40. So eight o'clock?
It'll be reasonable, but Gumps will not be done.
Okay, so we have to-
Whatever, but we'll be here. We'll be here, and you want, how many copies of the drawing do you need? A couple, or?
Yeah, just a couple.
Okay.
Three?
Yeah, probably one.
But ultimately, when I file a plan with the lot, with the registry and deed, I'm gonna need to have you sign something similar to this.
Mylar.
The mylar, right. And a mylar, which is solely the remaining lot.
No, it'll show both.
It'll show both on that second mylar.
The one that you do that's similar to this will be the mylar, and that would be the one that just illustrates the details that are required to be on there.
Okay. So one drawing will suffice for both lots?
Yes.
And the registry? Okay, thank you.
If I could just ask, one of the findings, we have to make item six, safe access, we spoke to. The second one was less adverse effect on the character of the neighborhood and the protection of open space. And I just wanted to, if you could leave that open just for a second. The width of the, the issue that, the issue that we, we would have to speak to there would be the estate lot versus if there was gonna be a road for a subdivision in this. They own the, they own the land, they have the ability to put in a second egress for a subdivision. So the question to us is-
Well, it's beyond a 500-foot cul-de-sac, so no matter what they do, it'll be better than trying to put in a roadway.
Well, I, my point was, you would go, originally, earlier, we were speaking of how you would take, you'd go up their existing driveway and you'd come out this end.
Right.
And that would be, that would be the road. That would be, this would be, this is the option. They either have, they have an estate lot here, or they have a little thing here, or the other option is you come straight across and go a road the whole distance. So the question that I have is that the driveway width is gonna be a lot narrower than a road, but there's a full 20 feet of, of construction easement on both sides, and it's that construction easement wouldn't be, is what's budding up against where the wetland line is likely to be. We don't know where it is, but it's where it's likely to be. And she is calling, regardless of, regardless of her not knowing where the wetland line is, she knows you're darn close, the Conservation Commission, and she knows you're in an endangered species area. So the question is, the ability, is it, is it, the flexibility in the future, the next person, to move that driveway over and not need the full construction easement? Because chances are.
The, when I purchased-
I think you have more flexibility for a driveway. I just want, I just think that that's, we are dealing in this, we're hearing from conservation that this is, this is a, an environmentally sensitive area, and they're gonna have some trouble.
Well, this could be reflected in our decision. I mean, in terms of-
Well, that's what, and I'm just, I want to have that conversation in front of him, is how might we, how might we, how might we address it? And I suspect if we don't need the, I suspect that if we can push, if we don't want to have the, the construction easement right up against the wetland, we should probably let them know that.
Just say that, one of the conditions is to move the driveway to the, is that the north side of the, of the access? Yeah, north, yeah. Well, kind of, northeast. Yeah, that, the driveway would have to be moved to the northeast to be along that side.
But I would rather than being specific, I mean, I think, refer to, to this.
Well, we always have to state it in our own decision if there's something that we want them to do to avoid the problem that you have with conservation. And the easiest thing for us to recommend, or condition, is that the driveway be moved as far away from the wetlands as possible.
Without, having them design it later, but giving them a design criteria that, under which, under which we would, we think they've used, we, they, we want to give them the, we want to, we want to make a decision that has the least environmental harm, and so we want to push the design in a certain direction.
Okay. Well, we have time to work through that.
Right, but that's, that's a concern.
You're coming back on the 30th, but there may be some language to that extent, okay?
And approval.
Just to be, yeah, yeah, just to make it clear that there are some challenges here that you need to work through, or the future owner, okay? Okay. So we need a motion to-
Continue.
Continue the public hearing on the 30th at 8:00 p.m. Do I have a motion?
Move to continue the public hearing for the application of a estate lot at 30 Frederickson Road to October 30th at 8:00 p.m.
Second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Do you need any of the drawings that we provided?
Are these are the ones from the application? Betsy?
These are the ones. That's mine.
Just so that Gino can communicate effectively with your- Just so that Gino can communicate effectively with your engineering, whatever.
I think I have, that's the one I have. I don't think I have this one, so I'll just tape it.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Could I could do my plan only on one clock?
You did.
Okay. The next item of business was to be a continuation of a public hearing for Oak Knoll Estates, but we have received, the board has received a request for continuance until the October thirtieth meeting. That being the case, Betsy, we would need to schedule that?
Yes, we would. Do that at eight fifteen.
What did we just do this one for? This one is eight?
Yeah. Which we know will be late on that one. So I think eight fifteen sounds safe.
Okay, do I have a motion?
We'll move to continue the public hearing for Oak Knoll Estates to October thirtieth, two thousand twelve, at eight fifteen p.m.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Looks like we have another continuance. The next item of business was to be the continuation of the public hearing for the residences at Hickory Bend. The board has received a request for continuance until late November, early December. So at this point in time, I don't believe we would take any action to schedule because we haven't scheduled ourselves out.
I think we need to continue it though.
You do?
Yeah.
Just to the next meeting, and then you can re-continue it again.
Okay.
Well, it won't be the end of November.
I think it's due to the fifteenth.
The furthest out meeting we have scheduled...
November fifteenth?
Yeah.
Are we going to have a hearing in...
You never responded.
November fifteenth.
I think you were the only one that didn't respond to that.
So November fifteenth is the...
Oh, you know what? I sent my response just to Betsy.
Okay.
So that...
Didn't know if you could make it.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. It's just that, it's just that I don't like my email getting clogged with everybody else's response, so I just send it to the person.
Okay. So just to clarify, the public hearing to discuss the proposed zoning bylaws, we were targeting October thirtieth, and because the bylaws weren't in condition to advertise and to follow through for the thirtieth, Betsy has proposed to the board that we have that public hearing on the fifteenth of November. So now, we are now going to schedule some other business here for that particular meeting on November fifteenth. So in terms of a time, Betsy, we probably need to...
If they really don't think they'll be ready by mid-November, instead of late November, could we just make it first on the agenda, and our agenda item would be to move it again to the next meeting?
Except that is going to...
Unless you think there's a chance it may be ready by November fifteen.
Hickory Bend.
I don't think so.
So we just could make it seven thirty, and then move on to...
Why don't we, why don't we schedule a meeting for December?
Because we...
We haven't scheduled all our meetings yet. Let's, let's, let's just, let's just continue it until seven thirty on the, on the fifteenth, and we'll end up continuing it again at that point, okay? So do I have a motion?
I'm on a roll for these continuations.
Thank you.
Keep going.
So I'm going to move to continue the public hearing for the residents at Hickory Bend to November fifteenth, two thousand twelve, at seven thirty p.m.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I just ask, the person who came to look at the plan, was in a butter?
I don't know. She didn't say her name.
And then, and then she left?
She left before.
Yeah, she asked what house is, it was next to, and I said these, and...
And then she moved on?
Looked, and yeah.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Next item of business is, to hear from Bob McGee, our DQW director. We've got a few topics, evidently Norfolk Commons, crosswalks, Callahan Pond Weir, perhaps some other things, Bob. So why don't I turn it over to you?
What's not on, on the agenda here, and I had Betsy circulate an inspection report for Toiles and Paddocks and Corral. Jeff, you're familiar with it since you've been all at that last meeting. There's no issues really to discuss, other than...
My apologies for not having that even sooner to you. Usually, what I like to do with inspection reports is complete the inspections up to the point of binder course, if it goes that fast, and then get that to you. And the binder's been in for a few weeks now. But there's a report, and I don't expect you to comprehend that whole thing right now. If I, if you had any questions, probably better to handle that. Take your time, study it.
So we're going to be discussing, as a matter of fact, really, we're going to get into new business next anyway, so it's probably appropriate for me to comment at this point. But we've had a few site meetings. You've participated, I've participated, representatives of Polte have been present, as well as a butters. So I guess, in summary, those meetings, I think, have been very productive, and I think very positive in terms of the developer agreeing to take the necessary actions to address issues. And I know there were even some timelines that you were pressing, Bob, that I believe that they've agreed to and they're trying to conform with. So I think it's a positive story, and continues to be. But you've presented us with a very comprehensive document. For the people at home, they don't have an opportunity really to get a sense of how comprehensive this is, but there's a lot of work here for sure. I mean, this is, I'm going to definitely take a look at this. You've got substantial commentary, you've got a number of photos here, so very much appreciated. I speak for the board. But continue, it continues to be positive in terms of the developer being responsive to you and your requests and your requirements and things of that nature.
Right. I, you know, another thing there, the photographs, the ink isn't too good, so I can get that to you people electronically if you'd really like to. I have a whole library of photos, much more than I'd bore you within that report.
They came up pretty good.
They came up well enough to understand, yeah.
Okay. One, one thing that you're probably not aware of, or maybe only know a little bit of, and it hasn't been resolved to the detail yet, is the water source. That has gone, that's gone back and forth a couple of times because of the arrangement and partnership and so forth. People were getting involved, Polte was getting involved, not to name names, but it was a difficult, difficult finding out who to communicate with that organization because there's like four people, players in this. And the long story short with the water, what we're going to do is supply the water from Norfolk. We've instructed them, and they knew that they had to put in a pump station because we don't have the static pressure to reach the top of the hill for fire, fire emergencies. So we'll put in an above pump, above-ground pump station near the Maple Street end of Warren. That'll be above ground. It'll have two domestic, like five horsepower engine pumps, and also, I'm not sure if it's two or one, fire protection pump. So really, that's the latest on that. And we'll also have an interconnect between us and Rentham.
But the Rentham residents are going to be receiving water from Norfolk?
No. The Rentham residents will receive their own water. They have more pressure, and there was some thought that maybe it'd be better to just grab all the water from Rentham. There's some legal difficulties with that kind of thing when you have intermissible agreements and so forth. But it, as it turns out, we'll have an interconnect, which Rentham will have their water and their supply, and we'll be supplying the Norfolk residents with our wells.
The interconnect is only used for fire?
For emergencies.
Right. Well, it won't be used for fire, and, because we're putting a fire protection pump on the Norfolk side down by the Maple Street.
Total contamination.
But it's, it was part of the agreement to have that connection because you're not, you just never know.
Yeah.
If you don't need it, you don't need it. But if it's there, we have backup, and it's always a best practice to have redundancy in water. If you don't need it, great.
So those pumps will be in a little shed, and then do they have protection around them?
Right. It'd be like a, I'm not sure if it's the exterior construction, if it's block, or if it's kind of like a sheet metal type thing. But it'll be nice, and, you know, they want to make it nice, too, because it's the entrance to their subdivision, so it'll be...
And the cost for supplying the pumps and all that is part of the developers?
Exa, oh, yes.
But then the ongoing repair and maintenance gets...
Right. We'll inherit that, but we'll also inherit the revenues, too, which we estimated about, I think we came up with twenty-seven to thirty-seven, thirty thousand dollars annually after a full build-out.
Was that shed on the plan?
I don't remember. No, because we weren't talking about having water that way.
It has to be, we have to look at it. We have to have a modification, or...
I think I...
To do the design of it and everything, just to make sure that it looks the way it's supposed to.
Right. That, that's the onus of the developer. And until they get their details, I think you're going to be seeing them, and I think that's what's going to happen.
Oh, okay.
And, but in, in terms of the protection, the water supply protection, as long as it's enclosed in its structure, and as long as that structure is locked, you don't have to have any out, any additional outside fencing or anything. I know we can't...
No.
Just, just, just the enclosure is enough.
Right. You know, they would like to have maybe gone the cheaper way, at least Walter would have, and maybe put something underground with a hatch and so forth. But then there's that maintenance threats of flooding and closed space, all that type of stuff. But we want something above ground, a little flowers around it, and maybe, there is a fence, I'm not sure, because we didn't design that part of it yet. But they're kind of like typical?
I can't think of any place in town.
I can't either. But they are, I can tell you that. But they exist in different places.
They put something in down at Joffran. They, they put in a shed down there for the same reason, right?
Yes, they did, yeah.
But it is a shed, that's the point. If it, if it is a shed, it's not, you don't need a fence and a shed. That's what I'm trying to, and you don't need a, you don't need a shed, you don't need a fence or a shed. You need the roof.
He's going to have to come with plans to show us, so...
Yeah.
Not worth having the discussion now.
It's the good to advise and say, don't bother with a fence. We don't think a fence
is necessary.
Well, and I, I'm not, I'm not thinking design. I'm thinking, what are the, what are the requirements for the protection of the water while we have the superintendent here? Because, because when he comes in and says, oh, we just want to put in some, you know, landscape, it's like, no, you got to protect the water supply. We know that.
Bob, do you know what this time, this time to Polte's timetable is for that work? Because they would come to us, I would imagine, for a minor modification, but that's probably how it would be handled. Do you know...
I'm not sure. I know that they're really close right now with pump design because Polte has their own consultant, but we have ours, too, and these people think on our behalf. So they're going back and forth, and they were kicking around some ideas and stuff like that. But just, just a week or two away, I think they'll have an answer for you, and probably put in front of you for, you know, and you take a look at the design of the shed or the building, or whatever it's going to be. But they're right around the corner finishing now.
Were you communicating with them on a regular basis? Would you make them aware that we have a meeting on October thirtieth, and they may want to be targeting that, or else there could be, you know, a delay in terms of their project?
I could do a full agenda, too.
I will do that.
And we definitely want to hear from you, make sure you're fully on board with whatever they're proposing. So whether you, whether you're here, or they send it to you, and send it, and send it to the board, sign it, or whatever. I don't know that it's absolutely necessary that you're here.
I think in this case, if we're going to talk about this again on maybe October thirtieth, I think it's on the agenda that I have the consultant come in and let the professionals address this.
Okay.
How much blasting was there, as it turns out?
Everything was blasted.
Oh, really? Like the whole road?
They blasted down fourteen feet. They blasted the entire right-of-way, the entire...
The whole length?
Everything. Well, pretty close to...
I haven't heard any blasting for a long time, since, since the warm weather. Is it, are they still blasting out there?
It's a kind of, it's a kind of, I think this, and I'm not, it's a kind of ledge that once you, once you set off a few explosives, the, it shatters. It's a shale. So it breaks down to a powder, even. It's, it's bad stuff.
Wow.
When you consider that for underneath pavement, or for backfill of any sort. Because it's, you hit it with water. Like I said, if you take those two rocks and you put, you know, rub them together and stuff, it doesn't, like, most rocks would turn into, you know, it'd break down to a sand if you could keep crushing it. This stuff gets to a powder where it can even get airborne. And then when you take that, you, so you know what I'm talking about, you put water on it, it becomes clay.
Clay.
And you can't even stand on it. That does not pass water, and that freezes up as soon as it touches thirty-two, and it's like hot as diamonds, and it's not good for subdivision.
So they end up over...
You'll see it patted on the walls. Steve, you mentioned how pretty the subdivision was, and I'm wondering, you know, they got to go into their, into each one of those lots, and they got to do the same thing. I'm not envious of the excavation out there.
They were moving along pretty well, I think, on the probing they were doing.
Yeah.
But that's not the actual blasting. And, you know, it, I mean, it involves...
He's saying the entire length, entire width.
Well, he was talking about the road. He was talking about the road.
The entire length of the road, the entire width of the, of the right-of-way.
And then after that...
Nothing but ledge.
Add a blast for utilities.
That's amazing, isn't it? I can't, we thought we were going to be saving a few trees out there.
The, the good news is, I mean, that, that, you know, there's folks who are very interested in moving to our town. There's, evidently, they've sold three homes as of a week or so ago. You know, they had already sold, sold three homes in Norfolk, so, I mean, they're not built yet, but...
No, but they went through this kind of construction and still liked it. In Norfolk, not Rentham.
Right.
How long do you think, how extensive do you think the ledge is going to be? How far into the property you think it's going to be?
I, just a lot of it everywhere I go, there's ledge.
Wow.
So I, I don't know. They should just consider blasting instead of probing, but...
So in terms of Maple Street, you've been able to work through all those details just fine, in terms of any...
I think so.
...paving, sidewalks. There's some activities with, because of the straightening of Maple Street, there's...
Right.
One individual in particular, there's some pretty substantial work being done in front of that individual's home. So that's all.
You heard it the same as I did. I think it's pretty good. They're pretty good to work with, actually, I thought. I'm talking about Polte as far as putting up what their promises were. I think it was, you know, a pretty good teamwork. Not to put a top coat on that section of Maple Street, just doesn't make sense to me, especially when we'd like to pave so much more of it and do it one ply instead of, you know, cutting up joints all over, you know, and rolling and twisting and turning with the trucks going into that subdivision on a brand-new coat of asphalt.
So basically, Bob's recommendation is to wait until the spring to do repaving at the intersection of Warren and Maple, because he's going to do a more substantial portion of Maple Street. And so, you know, the town will be compensated as far as that portion of the road, but he'll be able to continue with state funds, whatever funds you receive in terms of roadway paving and such.
And the telephone pole's gone?
Yeah, well, not, the one on Warren wasn't removed, but the one on Maple.
Oh, the one on Maple gone?
The one on Maple, that was a real hazard. Yeah, that, that was, that was kind of...
That was gone like three days after the last time I was here.
These, these dirt shoulders, though, will be, will be loomed, seeded, and stabilized before the end of the month.
Right now?
Yeah.
They already, pretty much are.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I couldn't tell from...
I don't know what you're looking at.
It looked like it was nicely graded. I just didn't realize it was already loomed and seeded.
Now, are you talking inside the subdivision, Andrea?
Maple.
On Maple Street, yeah. The grass is growing. It needs a cut right now. I mean, there's some little strips that are, are still gravel because they, you know, they put in a sidewalk, and, not to get you involved with every argument there, but the sidewalk that runs parallel with Maple Street needs to be elevated higher, like most sidewalks. I used to step off a curb onto the street, but they have the sidewalk lower. And it's a, it's a safety factor. And I told them before they paved it, it had to be done, and they assured me that, okay, okay, this, just take a look at, and then they paved it one Saturday, and I came out there. Wasn't I able to inspect it? And I'm saying, you know, you're probably going to have to take that up.
The sidewalk was paved.
Right. So there was a, a lot of these little things going on, but that was with the contractor. And, and it's the type of thing that happens when you're in, you know, you're respecting subdivisions. There's that communication breakdown. They're a loss if they don't communicate, and it's not according to specifications or according to what they wanted. So as a result, that sidewalk has to come up.
But it'll be stabilized for the winter. It'll, you'll leave it alone for the winter.
Yeah. Yeah. Actually, it looks nice, the sidewalk and the grass going down, but...
Yeah.
It doesn't.
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have seen it as a problem. That's why you're, got your job.
It's right where, it's right where the sidewalk comes back out, and it travels right next to the... It's right where, it's right where the sidewalk comes back out, and it travels right next to the street.
Yeah.
The street is level with the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Nobody wants that. You get a woman going down with her baby or something like, you need some kind of buffer, some kind of elevation change, something to wake up the driver. It's just too dangerous, you know, and then you could slide off in the winter, not to mention. It's not good stuff, unless the road is, I mean, the sidewalk's far enough away, and maybe has the protection of a tree once in a while, you know?
I guess that, yeah, how, how close were the sidewalks in that, in that example?
Like that, it should be, if, if.
They have to stay out of the wetlands.
Free foot buffer minimal. If you're gonna have a sidewalk button a street, then you want a vertical curb, a full six inch reveal, or even better.
And you're saying it's just a foot off?
And it's just like this much off, and they're at the same height.
Okay.
And we didn't overlay that road, when I overlay the road, now the road's even gonna be higher. We had that fight and conversation, and Pulte was pretty good about it.
Yeah, yeah.
We did, it's not something we, it's not something we warned him about in the sidewalk, at laying out the walkway. So it was something he would've had to have known on his own, because we didn't bring it to his attention.
Yeah. Well, like Bob said, that, you know, he was supposed to be apprised of the, you know, the plan, and he wasn't. So that's, that's the result of that. So, so in terms of support from the board, really, I think what I'm hearing is aside from the water, the pumping station, and just being aligned with you on that, and hopefully the 30th will bring some clarity to that issue. You, you don't need anything else from the board, correct?
Oh, I think it's going pretty well, considering.
Okay. Any other questions on that?
The planning?
Toils and Development, okay. Okay, next.
Jack stepped in the room, he had something going on tonight, too, and just in case there was, you know, we're talking about a couple of things here that really I'm as good as his approval, and when it comes to, like, for instance, the cobbles and stuff like that, they're, we've been going back and forth on that, and I just wanna let you know, it's just not, it's, it's, it just didn't go out the other air. I've been studying this thing, inputting some time, and I've been going to towns, and I'm looking at the different applications, and here we are again, talking about for the fourth time, you're gonna get sick of it. But now I'm going back to, and we now, I know we need to make a decision, but I can't see anything survive in this town for any length of time, except for cobble, unless we just put pavement in there and paint it every year, and we can do that too. The thermoplastic is okay, if it is an applied right, and you've got eleven different spots here, you can go to the town of Canton, and it, and it's all cracked. Stamped concrete, concrete simply just doesn't like salt, and we treat the streets in the wintertime, and so, unless we go out there and really spend much maintenance on it, and sealing it, and doing all that, and still with no guarantee. By the way, with the concrete, which would've been my favorite, if you go out, just so you know that I'm not crazy, if you go out and look at some of these sidewalks out here, sidewalks are good, but you'll start, you'll start to see the parking.
Yep.
That's from salt getting thrown from the trucks, and when you plow, you have your windrows, it melts on the street and so forth. Butch was under the impression, good try, but no matter how strong the concrete it is, it's the slurry in the top that flakes away, so.
We just replaced the sidewalk on Friday?
Yeah, yeah, that was just terribly deteriorated, and so a crosswalk with concrete doesn't seem to be, unless we're in North Carolina or somewhere further south, because they don't plow. The other thing we looked at was stamped asphalt. Stamped asphalt is good for the first couple of months, then the tire tracks wear through it, and it just goes away. Not good.
The color goes away, turns to just asphalt.
Plus.
The grooving.
The grooves.
The grooves too.
Now, the tire tracks, constant tire path, just wears it away, and underneath the cobble, he's great, but. And so there's like four right there, and all I could come back to is cobble, most expensive, but it's the most durable. Again, I'm not trying to sell any of these, I just don't wanna make a mistake, so we're doing it the third time. Because then you'll throw me out of town.
Your only concern with cobble was just to ensure it was smooth enough, right, in terms of, you know, whether it's walking or rolling.
The ADA compliance, I think, is, is that what it was, the ADA compliance?
I only heard that through the grapevine. I'm going with to actually, I'll make, I'll call the architectural board to find that out. I mean, Tom, you don't know that for sure, or Gino, or.
I've never specified the particular cobble you're talking about, no.
I'm only afraid that if I ask them, they'll probably start just saying no, just because it sounded like it should be better. But the, if I go with the thermo face top, it's just a more, it's a more expensive application, and probably a little bit more slippery, too.
If I, if I remember correctly, a lot of the problem was that we didn't think we had the substructure?
Well, if you look at the cross section, and I have a cross section of what's out there right now, you have granite curbing going this way, and you have the bricks going in between it. The granite curbing is called flush granite curbing.
Yeah, I've seen that.
It's four inches wide, it's twelve inches thick, and according to specification, I think what you have out there is, they put that curbing in first, and then they pour six inches of reinforced concrete, leaving six inches for asphalt, a thinner asphalt than here, and then they put the brick on, which is like two and a quarter, two and a half, and that brings it out to a perfect flush with the street. So I think if you subtract all that out, bring it right back down to the concrete, that that's six inches or five inches or whatever it is, is gonna fit a cobble. Real nice with a, with a small bit of mortar. This small bit of mortar will be wet, you put the cobble in it, the mortar will take the shape of the, you know, the, the ins and outs of a cobble, so it'll take the shaking and rocking out of it, and then mortar the joints. Mortar is concrete, too, doesn't like salt, but inside the joint, who cares if there's a little flaking, you know? And we gotta go point it every once in a while.
I see our associate member, who was a civil engineer, he's shaking his head in agreement, I think, right?
Sounds good to me.
Do you remember why the granite didn't work? Why, you know, the granite cobble in front of South Station was nothing but a problem, and now it's bituminous. And it kept cracking and breaking, and.
I don't know what caused that, I don't know what their subgrade is below that and stuff, but they also have much more traffic than us, and bigger trucks and everything going over that. And I know, I mean, I was sometimes on the crosswalk when eighteen wheeler would come by, and the granite block would pop, pop right up.
Pop up.
Or crack, you know? I don't know.
Okay, I just, I don't, I don't mean to go off, so that's the kind of thing, since he's walking every day.
Those weren't cobbles, though, those weren't cobbles, those were just, they were just, yeah, but they, I think they maybe were an inch thick.
Oh, okay.
I think they were almost like countertop, because they were, they were like square pieces that they just kinda laid in there.
So he's speaking of something much thicker.
So it's actually an engineered piece of concrete, it's not a true cobblestone.
So I will.
It's a real granite cobblestone.
Check on it?
Yeah.
But it's.
It was an actual story.
Was it done with silver linings done?
It's not that wavy kind.
More like in Boston, right?
We designed it.
I have samples, I didn't bother bringing them in, I did recommendations on that. But if you wanna see them again.
I'll find out tomorrow.
I'll leave them in Betsy's office, so that when you're in the planning rooms.
I mean, I think, I think the timing is good, because I think you know what my goal is, to try to understand the material of construction, so that we can reconnect with Stop and Shop, because, you know, there's this outstanding bond, and, you know, we would like to take care of that business. You know, and in the past, they've been focusing on the cost of the thermoplastic, which is less, and so it's put us at a bit of a disadvantage in terms of negotiating. And if in fact, we're gonna rally around a cobble design, which is in fact somewhat more expensive than the brick, which is in the plan that's been approved, then I would think the town's negotiating position is gonna be improved substantially. So, so if in fact, that's the decision, then I think it's gonna be a whole lot more straightforward to secure the funds for brick, recognizing that it's gonna cost, if anything, more money for the town to install cobble, you know, something of superior quality, durability, what have you. So that'll be an interesting conversation, so, okay? So I guess as far as members of the board, I mean, I am comfortable with, you know, Bob's recommendation, if in fact, you're recommending the cobble at this point in time, or if you would like to, you know, bring samples, I'll leave that up to you, but I personally defer to you on something like this.
I went with his recommendation the first time he mentioned it, I said, that sounds really good, cobble is, that's the way to go.
The, yeah, the, the only, the only concern that we've ever expressed was that, was that by choosing cobble, we were gonna put some of our own money into it.
Yeah, well, that's true.
And that we were going to, that we know X number of walks need to be done, and that we weren't gonna get sufficient funds to cover the full amount of walks. So that's a decision that I know you are taking very seriously, but it's gonna come out of your budget, so.
It's one-time cause.
We can only do what we do.
He's, he's gonna pay either way, because when he puts brick, he's gonna have to repair it a whole lot sooner than any.
Right, right, so, so, yeah, that's why, I'm totally defer to him, but it's, because it's gonna cost us.
Why don't we agree, if you give us a specification, you'll give us the detail, then we can request a follow-up meeting with Stop and Shop, and we can agree, I'm pretty confident at that point we can agree on what the proper funding would be from, from Stop and Shop. And then we can work collaboratively with you in terms of the allocation of the funds, okay? Because there are some, there's some flexibility in terms of how those funds are applied, in terms of certain areas being priority areas. I think ultimately.
Within this, within this group of sidewalks.
Correct, within the project, within the scope of the project. So is that a reasonable strategy?
What I was thinking was that probably whatever we do, we do next year. I need to keep these bricks together out there now for safety reason, so.
As far as negotiations go, I think. Yeah.
Well, I love to hear that, because it's gonna, you know, you only have a small section here. Jack, you're gonna give me the money for everything out there. So the board, I think the selectmen have to, and through Jack, have to agree that we're gonna do this everywhere, and not just gonna do it here and get rejected out there. So there's a little bit of teamwork here.
It's like we already talked about, they wanna have something that lasts, I mean, this is, center of town, don't want it to look like it looks now.
Sounds good, and.
All right, so step one, give us a spec. Step two, the board will meet with Stop and Shop, hopefully bring that to resolution. Step three, subsequent discussions with you in terms of the details and the priorities, and we'll deal with that probably in the spring.
Sounds good.
Well, we'd have to have a, a cost estimate for both of them, so that we know what the difference is between.
Brick and cobble?
Well, we already have them.
Do we have cost?
I don't know that we have the cobble.
Yeah, the cobble, I don't know.
Must have been the detail.
Before.
Tom?
You did do the cobble?
Tom?
Did we do, I, I don't.
Long time ago.
Remember being cobbling.
We didn't do anything with the spec.
So we have the brick, right?
Which is what you're negotiating on.
And I have some, I have some percentages I either had gotten from you or from Bob.
Level of magnitude higher.
One versus the other. I think, I thought you had written that.
Maybe, I don't know. Once we get the specification for what Bob wants in terms of the cobbles, we can pair that to brick.
Okay.
We just need to.
Okay, very good. Next.
The most, the ever popular.
Callahan Pond.
Thank you very much, yeah.
Only the pond, not the rest of the subdivision.
No, no, unless we use that for some reason, but you know what happened up there is we, the board's selectmen approved funds for us to collaborate with Wall Street to put the ware in, to do the rip reps well, to put a culvert under Callahan's Pond, to pave the road, put some sedimentation devices in, and some other small improvements. So far, the culvert's in, and that's all that was done by Wall Street.
Culvert under the street.
Culvert under the street's done, it's all done, nice job, it's paved over, you know, it's only a binder course and so forth, but we'll cut the joints and we'll extend that, and there's a few little more improvements that we need to do on each side. Was under agreement that, as you know, Wall Street was going to put in the ware at the pond in the rip reps well, that we have captured in writing. Wall Street hangs their hat on the fact that the agreement went past the thirty days, and there lies the argument. Right now, we have that working just fine, but it's in a temporary state. We just have, basically, I'll tell you, it's just like a hose from underneath the lake, underneath the water, just shallow underneath the water, and now it's out of the water because the wa, the lake went down, and it just comes through a backfill berm into the swell. When the lake goes up, the water goes out. When the lake goes up, the beavers can't dam it up, because they won't dam anything underneath, underneath the water. But that's just very temporary, so we need to put the concrete ware in, set it at a certain elevation. It's not a real big deal, other than, you know, the challenge of holding the water back, which there is a way to do. But what happened is, my communication with Wall Street is that they don't have to do it. And that's where I get just a little bit lost, you know, where does, who, who picks up the battle here? And I'm confused with that.
So my recollection was that you had subsequent discussions on an alternate design, and it just had to, I think you and I talked about this maybe a couple of weeks ago, and it just needed to be sketched out in terms of what we would find acceptable, and that's where I lost track of it, I don't think you and I have discussed it.
Well, the, the original design, it was a collaboration. GLM was their design engineer, and we also used them, and we did, we went through the NOI process. We, again, matched some money to get some of this work done. GLM designed a ware that, according to Wall Street, was just a little bit too expensive. Knowing a little bit about wares, I said, well, if we can just get them to put it in, maybe we can settle for a lesser design. So I put an email out a few weeks ago, saying, you know, we're missing our opportunity, we need to get this in. If you wanna do a lesser design, and the planning board doesn't mind, I'm for it. I just want you to get it in, you know, and stuff, and then he writes back, and even then, he says, with a lesser design, a cheaper cost, that he's not responsible for paying for it, however, in the spirit of good, whatever, he'll collaborate again with us. And you know what I'm saying, he's just chipping away and chipping away to the point where it's a.
So what would it take to express the concept that you have in mind to paper, for someone to do that? So that I'd be willing to speak with Lou Petrosi directly on this. You know, we've been able to negotiate some other aspects of the project, and it's worth, I think, giving that a go again for this particular issue, but, you know, unless it's on paper, something, some type of sketch, it makes it a bit difficult in terms of understanding the extent of it, the cost, et cetera. Can you help with that?
Well, GLM is coming, I put a, placed a call with them yesterday, and I haven't heard back, and I was hoping to give you something that maybe you would approve here, I'm, you know, maybe it wasn't the meeting for that. I was thinking that if, before hearing what you just said, that we take, if the selectman would let me spend some of the money that I had designated for the street, go ahead, put that ware in, because it's not a joke, it's a serious matter. If the lake goes up, I don't know what's gonna happen, maybe just a little bit of minor flooding. I don't wanna find out. I think that ware should go in, we should probably put it in, and then just stop all that work in that neighborhood. And if we're wrong, I don't think that we're wrong, you know, I just don't know what to tell you. I'd just say, it was his responsibility, stop and cease, you can't go anymore until you sit down, face us, you know, face the problem with us, and pay us back for doing it.
Well, how many, how many lot releases do they, how many lot releases?
Get it done.
There was, there was several lot releases, so in terms of, you know, lot release, you know, that, I think, you know, base, in terms of doing anything in the short term, it would have to be like a cease and desist order, and, you know, it's expensive. It's expensive for the town, you know, in terms of enforcement and such. So I recommend that we, and you give, and other members of the board can certainly participate, so, you know, it's not to be exclusive, but that you give the board the opportunity to meet with Wall Street, and see if we can in fact get this addressed in a timely manner, okay? So, you know, so what is required in terms of getting the concept on paper? Is that, what's the?
Well, we already have an agreement, we already have a set of drawings, a cross section and everything. He's asking us to bend and bend and bend.
Yep. But how about your plan?
Who provided those drawings? Was it, was it GLM for them, or GLM for the town?
It was a collaboration, it was GLM.
Is their name on it?
Yes.
Wall Street's name is on the plan.
We've been, we've been through this, we've been through this, and we've got legal counsel on this, so let's not do this.
Yeah, that's, that's the thing, that's the thing.
You have, you've said that you've got an idea of something that you think would be, you know, would meet the requirement in terms of, you know, being robust enough, what have you, in terms of the design. If you were to go ahead tomorrow and proceed with the town's money to do something. with the town's money to do something, what I'm asking for is, can we put that to paper? Can we describe what you would do tomorrow if you had your druthers? And can the board have an opportunity to discuss that with Wall Street and pursue the funding for that from him at this point in time, rather than in the future, which is going to cost the town in terms of legal services and what have you? I think it's worth-
Jeff, I think I could probably do that, but I got to admit, I'm probably blindsiding Jack on this because I haven't even discussed it with him. But, um, he's got a lot of background now, so I didn't have to, nice way to tell him. I can, if I can communicate that, I think, yes, but, and I can, but it's-
Can we get GLM to finish, I mean, I know you left a message, but if you would give GLM to finish doing the scaled-down version, I guess it's-
That's, yeah, for sure. That'd be easy.
And then you can negotiate with the scaled-down version, right?
That's what I suggest.
But I think what you're saying is, then go ahead with our funds and go ahead and install it.
Let's, let's take an op-
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not going to keep you in the lurch for a long period of time.
No, I think mid-January is kind of tough. We're going to go the winter without it. Last year was a nice winter, so we made it, we escaped through there, but-
I'm sorry, when you say mid-January, you mean, you mean you want to have the construction done by mid-January?
Yeah.
Right. I don't want to do it in the snow.
It's done in November.
Yeah.
The water's down right now, really. It's still, and we're still, we don't have the water that you usually do this time of the year, but-
This is a really long history. You don't want to know about it.
It's off-site improvement, it's not our bond.
Right. Okay. So, let's do that. We have another meeting on the 30th. So, if you had, let's say, a week or so to try to pull something together, and if I used the next week prior to the meeting on the 30th to try to schedule an appointment, and I invite any other board members who'd like to participate, like, would that be a strategy worth-
Sounds great, yeah.
All right? All right.
Just, without going into detail, the whole, the 30 days is up, is a, is, has been his position through a few negotiations. It's always his default position, and we've negotiated through it to get, to get our decision upheld. So, it's, it's, he, this guy's a pretty good, this guy pulls teeth.
Okay. There were some things that we discussed with Wall Street not too long ago, that in fact, the work was completed, and there were some funds that were applied and such. So, we, you know, we've had some success, so let's try to continue, you know, to pursue that and try to work with these folks, okay? Next.
Really, I don't see anything on the, on the agenda, but I didn't know if, I thought maybe you might have some questions, you were looking for some background on the intersection development going on at Holbrook and Route 115.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yes, yes. And the neighbors in the area have raised it.
Right. And I know, couldn't ask for a better threesome here to talk about it. But, there's a bit of, you know, there's a bit of research that's going on. Jack has gotten himself involved, and really, that's why I've asked him to come here, just in case he could field a question that I couldn't. I didn't have any history of this. Now, I'm fully up to speed, I think. So, Tom's been a real, he's good about anything. Mr. DePlacido is just being a partner on this. There's some, I guess through the order of conditions or the, there's the agreement that, the way I understand it is, the development of that intersection. Well, first of all, there was a set of approved drawings showing the intersection, and it was approved. Later on, I guess it was reevaluated, maybe by the previous director. A new design was established, and I think that Tommy had agreed to do it to the new design. I don't know if that was presented to the board, and you had a chance to review it.
I think we saw it.
But whatever the deal is, I, there was a split. I think it was like a 76-24 split. Rivers Edge Development was going to, or DePlacido was going to put up the 76 percent, and I think Pin Oaks was going to do the 24 percent. So, and then Rivers Edge was going to do the sidewalk from Holbrook Street and 115 down to their entranceway. Not only is that done, but it's done another couple hundred feet down. So, they've gone above and beyond on that. But there is no sidewalk on, on Holbrook Extension, so we need to track down, I think it's Oxbow Development, and-
The money was never put in escrow?
Well, that's the, what we're trying to figure out.
Didn't Betsy tell us the last time that there was money that set aside for the sidewalk?
Would you give Jack a-
Well, just, I mean, Betsy can't answer the question too, but there was money put in a bond, that I understand, and that's what we're trying to track down. It's probably an expired bond, not, you know, not a cash deposit. And-
Insurance bond, I think.
So, between Betsy and Karen over at the DPW, we're trying to track down where that is.
So, Oxbow may think that they've paid it. They've deposited it.
Well, I'm not an expert in insurance bonds, but they, you know, they, they had a deposit, created an insurance bond. That expired six, seven, eight years ago, so that's what we need to, I mean, to me, that looks like the source of the funds for, for their 24 percent. We need to hunt, so we collectively need to contact Oxbow and them and find out. I mean, we don't have that money, I guess the bottom line is, we don't have that money on deposit. We've looked, we've looked at the planning board records, we've looked at the accounting records. So, I assume that bond was the intent of that, make sure that was going to happen, but that expired.
I didn't know that could happen.
So, in terms of that process, Jack, is that like another, another week or a couple weeks in terms of understanding, you know, the, or do you need, do you need anything from the board? Are you going to work with, you know, the town employees and legal counsel to try to understand?
Yeah, we'll do that. I mean, you, do you guys have any contact with the developer?
Has, have they been contacted at all through all this, to see where they're at?
I, I mean, this goes back so far, I mean, I'm not familiar with it.
The gas time was when the redesign went in, was being discussed.
Does it make sense to reach out to them while they're simultaneously searching for the, the bond, just to-
Have they done any, any work in the town since that project?
No.
Where, does anybody recall where, where they were doing business out of, you know, a local contractor, or?
I believe they're currently working on a subdivision near my house. And I do know a person who's worked for, who was involved in that project, who's around, so.
Personally?
Yeah. From that way. He was on a board, he met with me.
So, if you were to help us, Jack, just understand, you know, the history here and the legal aspects in terms of how we may want to introduce ourselves to this company at this point in time, I mean-
Aren't they responsible for maintaining that, that bond? Isn't it their responsibility to, to make sure that that bond stays current?
I, I would imagine. I don't, I'm, like I said, I'm not a bond expert now, or a planning board-
Yeah.
It's not their motivation. It might be their responsibility, but it's in their interest to let it expire.
That's right, and if we're not enforcing it.
And they're done with the project and gone.
It's worth reaching out and just asking them a question.
Well, I think I just want to make sure that we do that, yeah.
I give them a lot of history and the right way to-
So that we put our best foot forward, so we don't jeopardize any future case we may have. I mean, that's all I'm saying.
Right.
I guess I was, my thought of coming here tonight was to see if, to ask if you guys had a relationship with the developer and wanted to pursue it from your end. If not, I'll do it with the help of legal counsel and, you know.
Well, we, we know the people because we did some of the construction observation out there. If you want me to give them a call, I'd be pleased to do that, so.
That'd be great. I mean, it seems like that would be the friendly approach, rather than me going in.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Well, I mean, I guess the only thing I would ask is, you know, is it, is it best to know what our legal standing is before entering into any conversation? I'm not sure they're going to be really all that interested in committing funds to the town. You know, I think we need to be a little bit careful in terms of how we approach it, no?
At least we should probably have some reference to the actual bond and the date it expired and say, "Hey, you know, this was, you provided this bond, but it expired on such and such a date. It wasn't supposed to."
And what's the status and-
Yeah, exactly.
So, so, Jack, you know, I think what I'd like to do, I have no problem in terms of the board interfacing, or Tom on behalf of the board, but can we work with you to understand before we do that, what our legal standing is? I mean, does this fall into one of these things that it's gray matter and, you know, maybe in the interest of both parties to negotiate some reasonable outcome here, or is it, you know, is it, you know, is it to our, you know, are we in a strong position or a weak position, I guess, in terms of that? That would be good to know.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I mean, and I need help from probably Tom or your point of view, just, you know, what, what the, what all the planning board requirements, you know, what all the, whether it's your subdivision requirements, or order of conditions, or whatever. I, you know, I'm not familiar with all of all-
It's sort of a chicken and egg thing, because a friendly outreach might result in, you know, our, every intention is to do it, it slipped, you know, it's been so long, kind of thing. I mean, I'm giving them a huge generous benefit of the doubt here, but-
My recollection is they're pretty decent to deal with, so.
What's, what's the amount, roughly, anybody?
Honestly, I think that the thing to go back to is, is the last letter where the, where the percentages of what, that was the last action we took, where we, where we had a redesign, we knew what percentage was Pin Oaks and what percentage was, was Duplessis, and, and what was, and what was not our-
Well, and if there was a bond established, then it should have been a cost to complete, and that should be in the meeting minutes of what that cost to complete was.
Right, and in that percentage of what, of that percentage of how much is theirs, that's, that's the last known action that we took, and that's what we're trying to get status after that, right?
And we have that, we have that. There was two letters, one in February, putting a calculation together for the intersection and the sidewalks. Then it was reconsidered, maybe at the request of DePlacido, that it was still a 76-24 percent split for the intersection, but the sidewalks were going to be done proportionately to the build-out of the developments. That came out in March, that was agreed upon. So, you do have something in writing.
Agreed upon with, with Pin Oaks.
With Pin Oaks and DePlacido.
Okay. And we have our base decision, which says you guys will both pay this. That's what we have.
Let's, let's do this, if, if folks are in agreement. We have two weeks until our next meeting. So, Tom, if, be so kind to get the facts together.
Sure.
And then, if you're comfortable that you have the facts, reach out, and you can express the fact that we're finally ready now to move forward with this project and, you know, take their temperature, whatever, or wait until the next meeting, and we can discuss it further, if you're unclear in terms, okay?
I'll go through the file, I'll talk to you, and you can give me the final directions.
Okay, is that-
And Jack, yeah, sure.
And Bob's file.
Sure.
Yeah, Tom, grab a microphone, please.
Just a little background on some bonds. Anytime I've ever taken out a bond or anything like that for work, usually the insurance companies, even though it expires, won't release it until they have a letter of approval from a town or a governing authority. Even though it may be expired, they'll still bill you for it, you're still going to pay for it, and keep renewing it until they actually have something that's in writing, releasing it. That's been my experience with any type of bond on that.
Something expires and you still pay for it?
Well, it, it would, a lot of times, they're like annual, you know, you'd pay for them, fix them out, you know, for the next 12 months, and then in 12 months, you have to pay for it again. And they, they won't release it until they get something in writing from the governing authority, whoever that bond's through. That's, that's been my experience. I don't know if that's with all bonding companies or anything, but that's been my experience.
So, how about street acceptance in terms of what language we have as far as, you know, street acceptance? Is there a relationship between these things?
Not in this case, because it was a condominium, it was private street. This was off-site litigation for a multifamily project, so. My thought maybe also that, I don't know exactly how the town, you know, finances is structured, but I suspect this may have been some kind of a cash contribution, which is somewhere. Because it wasn't like a, a bond that we were anticipating they'd complete the work. My recollection is that this was deliberately to be deferred for a fair period of time. So, I'm not sure it's a bond in the conventional sense. It may be some kind of a cash deposit. I don't know whether that's been researched on the accounting end or not, but-
We've looked between the planning board records and the town accounting records, and we don't see a cash deposit, thanks Tom, for the, for the, for the intersection. We saw some other small amounts for sidewalks, I think, but not, not for the intersection. And, you know, again, I appreciate Tom's help. You know, I'm, I was kind of curious as to, you know, an insurance bond, how does that get, how's that train, how does that move forward into funding a project? To me, that doesn't sound like the normal course of action, that we would take an insurance bond and start expending against to construct the sidewalk, so, I mean, construct the intersection. So, maybe you're right, maybe there's, the intent was to have another cash bond, but maybe they can show us some proof that that existed, and that'll help us with more research. But I, I just don't see that in our records.
What hasn't been said tonight, but is clear by, by the way Bob brought this up, is the reason we're having the conversation is because Hickory Bend is coming before us and the, and the, the desire to get this all done at the same time is that, is that-
I'm not, I'm not sure if you were going to tell me, Henry, but I don't know if Hickory Bend, I, I don't know if that's a red herring here. This is something before Hickory Bend was even thought about.
That's correct.
It is, it is.
So, we did not just lay that.
It's, I'm not laying, no, no, the key, the key was, through that discussion, the neighbors came out, and the neighbor said, "You're, you want to develop along this street, we really need, we really need the sidewalk." So, the conversation, the conversation we're having is, is we're trying to get the sidewalk and the road work done in concert with, with Hickory Bend, so that, so that, so that the sidewalk gets built.
Makes good construction sense, but not financially, right.
Yeah, so the curb cuts and everything are understood. So, fair enough. So, we got a couple of weeks that we'll see what we can turn up and possibly contact Oxbow. But if you're uncomfortable with that based on, you know, the information, Tom, then we'll just wait, wait till our next meeting, and we'll pick it up at that point, okay?
Is everybody clear about which intersection plan is going to be built? I mean, is that-
I think we do. I think we're on the same page. One and they're on the same page.
Well, I think only two of us were on the board at the time, that it was redesigned. And it was approved at the time as being the, it was agreed upon by the DPW superintendent, the parties that were going to build it.
And is there a plan of it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's been costed out, right?
Yeah, we have.
You have it in your office, right?
Yeah, we have all the cost estimates and-
Okay.
I think my only, and again, I'm an outsider here, but there was, there was one plan that seemed to be approved, and there were some revisions for the old director, that, if I understood the conversation correctly, were increasing the scope of the, of the intersection. I don't think Bob, or Mr. DePlacido, or I, for whatever that matters, think that those, the enhanced plan is necessary, but, so, at some point, you need to have that conversation. I don't need- and I don't need to be here.
Well, I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but isn't this, this, isn't this an issue that, you know, Bob, you have more experience, certainly than I do, in terms of designing an intersection, so, I mean, is that something that you want to be proactive and tell us, okay, here's what we got, we got this, we got that, you know, here's the history on this, here's the history on that, this is what I'd like to do, you know, if you've got a cost estimate or if you need support from the board, I mean, so, I mean, I, I see you being the champion of this, am I wrong?
Well, I hope I'm not out of place here, there was a, an approved set of drawings, the drawings got then changed to a greater expense. Did De Placido and Pinoc's agree to that? One thing was approved, another, and then later on, things changed.
Is this after the February, March letters?
I'm not sure.
Yeah, you have to see when it was established, how much it was going to cost.
So, but, but to your point, if it was after the approval and this board wasn't involved, it sounds like all that we can really comment on was what was approved, which was subsequent, prior to...
You would have more to add to that?
Prior to those revisions.
Tom's got a good history of it and...
What I could say is when the Village of River's Edge was originally approved, we did a redesign of that intersection, I think it was even reviewed by BSC, and it was approved, it was signed off and recorded in part of the original Village of River's Edge project. A few years later, as we're going through construction, the past DPW superintendent took it upon himself that he did not like that intersection design, and then contracted it and had a redesign of it done, and brought that before the developers of Pinoc's and myself, and there is a lot more scope there. For instance, I believe this paving that goes out into 115, like beyond, you know, a few hundred feet to the side and stuff, so it was a, it was a whole scope, but that was quite a bit more than the original intersection design, and I think it was even in a piece of cooperation with the town, maybe a little bit with that, on the 115 part of it, it gets a little brave, it was a few years ago, but probably about three years ago, I wanted to move forward, get it done, you know, I've got trees on the Holbrook side of the intersection, closer to 115 as a, as a peninsula there that comes out, and I wanted to move along and just get it done with everything, and I, I just couldn't have a, you know, to get the, you know, get it moving together or anything with that through the DPW superintendent at that time, so, that's where we're at now, I've been sort of, been trying to get things done, and I really haven't been able to have any luck with it. But that's where we're at.
But Bob, I thought I heard you, or maybe it was Jack, say the comment that you didn't necessarily feel that those revisions are relevant anymore, you're okay with the original design?
It's, it's kind of like, I don't know if it's a matter of taste, I'm not an engineer, and the designs for intersections now are moving towards more of a 90-degree approach, and if you know what I'm talking about. However, if you're up on 115, if you're coming out of Holbrook Extension and you want to, and you come to a dead stop and you want to move out, that traffic's coming quicker, and I think it puts a person at a disadvantage, whereas it, it leans to the right, in the original approved design, you've, you can give yourself an advantage. I love giving drivers advantages, to stay out of accidents and, you know, merge and so forth, but when you come up and you, and you've got to come off, now you've got to take a shot, right? This traffic may be coming at you at 40, 50 miles an hour, whatever the speed limit is, the other way you can come up and you can roll out, gain speed, not slip, and, to me, I liked the first design.
So, to move point.
Well, I mean, I, I guess my feeling on it, I'll just speak for myself, but, I mean, if you've got a couple of plans, does it make sense to have Chief Stone or somebody look at it who has more experience than, you know, I think members of the board do in terms of, you know, the intersection design, in terms of the likelihood of accidents and history, and, I mean, I mean, I don't, I don't know if the planning board should champion one design over another, I'm not comfortable doing that, I don't know, is anyone else?
We've only approved one plan.
We had a, we had a, it was a performance standard approval. The details, the details are DPW's.
But if at the end of the day, you know, it, it's appropriate to do something different, I think the sooner we know that and we can work on looking at the relative cost and what the implications of that decision are, but...
I don't think that's what he's saying. I think he's saying he wants to stick with the original, lower-cost solution.
That we, that we, that we saw.
What are you asking, what are you asking for, Bob?
Are we okay with...
Some money.
I just brought it up because I want to make sure if we went with the lower-cost one that he likes, you guys weren't going to have a problem with that.
I'll speak for myself, I never saw any of the, I never saw any of the design, so, I mean...
I'd rather get some people in the conversation, and, you know, as soon as that happens and then somebody gets nailed, you know, hey, Bob, like, nice design.
But we'll work on it.
Not that I'm worried about that, I live with that every day, but...
Yeah, Chief Stone's agreeing.
Yeah, see, I hate those intersections where people go out at an angle and they figure, oh, I can just scoot right out there because I can go faster. I like 90-degree intersections myself.
But it can't be 90 degrees because 115 is not, is not straight, it's a curve.
Well, you'd have to turn a little left before you go right.
It's not, it's not a merge, it, the merge is closer to 90 than coming in, because the, because the street is not.
I think, I think Jeff's suggestion is a great one, if you, if you feel more comfortable with the original plan, that's what this board approved, so we don't really have any say beyond that, but it might be a good idea to review it with Chief Stone and make sure he is still, I don't know if he reviewed it back when it was proposed or not, but that he supports your opinion, which is that it's a better design. And then throw away the revisions that were done at a time you weren't even here, you don't like them, you don't want them.
If you want to do something different, just come back and let's understand what's different about it so that we understand the cost.
That's a good idea. If somebody did it, maybe there's a reason, and I just didn't see it.
Right.
And I'd need to find out why they did that, so, I, let me do some background and we'll come back.
We have to figure out the bond, we have to figure out the, where the money is anyways.
We need to get Oxbow, that's our...
But I, I mean, I'd like for you to champion the, you know, the recommendation in terms of whether we do what was approved by the board, what this board, or another board, I wasn't on the board at the time, but, or do something different, you know, just come back and tell us, and then we'll help support you if you want to do something different, and I'm not sure where that's going to put us in terms of the finances, but we'll, we'll see where we're at, and maybe Tom will have some perspective on Oxbow, and we have Mr. De Placido here, who's more than, more than happy to facilitate.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is, it has been hard though for you, Tom, to sit there and listen to the people complain about it when you want to get it done.
I've wanted to get it done, and it's, it's, it's beyond what, actually, especially the sidewalk, I think people are under the impression that from Pinoc's down to the village, it's my responsibility, but it never was on that or anything.
Yeah, no, I understand, understand the position you're in.
And I just want to say, if it, if it does, if we go back to the original plan that was approved and was signed off, when the Village of River's Edge was, was approved, I have no problem constructing that, like that, and moving ahead with it and being done, and Pinoc's doesn't even have to be involved with it and stuff, I think, so, that's something to consider as well.
I don't like that design, no.
Anything else, Bob?
That's it.
Jack?
Oh, thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. So, Mr. De Placido, we're on to new business, and I see we have the Village of River's Edge modification, the Mylar endorsement, so you've been waiting patiently for that Mylar to be endorsed?
Exactly, and even being roped into a few other things. But I'm glad I was here for it.
As long as it's on our agenda.
Yeah. Actually, two or three birds have one stolen, and it is, yeah, just with this. I think what we have here is, this is, if you remember when I started to develop the property off of Holbrook Street, it was broken into two different projects, one was a modification of the Village of River's Edge, had two additional buildings, four units, and the other one was still before you know, in a hearing process. This is the, is the final plans and the Mylars to sign. I believe your consultants have had a chance to review them, and I believe they're okay, I haven't heard anything, to the contrary.
They're fine.
And I would just ask that if the board could, could endorse them tonight so that they'd be ready to be recorded.
I'll make a motion if, if I know exactly what we're calling it. It's a River, is that River's Edge, what is it, what does this reference?
These are the same, that's just the...
Oh, the modification dated November 1st, oh, okay. I'll make a motion to, to sign the plans for the, a modification to the Village at River's Edge dated November 1st, 2011.
Aye, a second.
Further discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the board will take a five-minute break to endorse plans.
Is this the Village River's Edge slash...
It's now 10 o'clock. So the next item of business is regarding a revised A&R plan for Gump's Farm property, and I know that we're in possession of some documentation here from you, Gino, on this.
Yes.
So, would you like to walk us through?
The plan looks fine, the only thing I had been uncertain about was the status of any buildings on, on those lots. I thought, I wasn't sure which lot it was when I drove by, and it looked like a, a new house on there, and it wasn't shown on the plan, but I understand that the lots that have been changed do not have buildings on them, so that makes it fine. It's just a minor adjustment of lot lines.
What lots are getting changed?
Lot 3.
That is...
Which is on the corner of Medway Branch and Borghum.
Oh, Lot 3A.
The revision of, of October 17, 2012, wow, yesterday?
Yeah. But this is good because it shows the existence, if anyone, if anyone wants to see. Well, this shows the change anyway.
It's a 4A, that's, 4A is changing?
3A is changing, 4A is changing, yes. 3A, sliver of it, or triangular shaped segment of it is being conveyed to the butter.
Osborne?
Osborne, I guess the Osborne's driveway actually was, went partially onto Lot 3A's property, so they moved that. Oh, and there's a stone wall along that area, so they probably thought the stone wall was the property line. And then on 4A, I'm not sure of the reason, but...
It's got something to do with the flood, the flood zone, they needed additional property bought in order to do, put the septic system there and then stay, there are wells, private wells on these easements right here, to stay away from those wells.
Is that the, the parcel D that they're adding on, is that what that is?
Correct. Looks like they're trading C for D.
Yes, yep.
Where do you see C?
It's in the wetland.
Oh, okay, okay. What we spoke of at a board of selectmen's meeting was the possibility of whether or not a pedestrian easement was needed across Lot 4, because the trail, for the trail to be in that area, and I see a utility easement, but I don't see a...
The utility easements are for the private wells.
Yeah, and I don't see, I don't see a trail easement, so I don't know.
I don't know what to go out down.
Because normally you would have to show an easement on a plan like this if it was going to exist, right?
Well, it's not essential, but now the law is, it looks like you, you could walk from Medway Branch around Lot 4A.
That's what I'm wondering.
Avoid the wetland.
That's, that's what I'm wondering.
Well, how do you do that? It looks to me like you walk right through the wetland.
No, no, right in this corner.
Oh, you mean here?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Right where you couldn't before.
Yeah, so that might be why they felt an easement wasn't necessary any longer.
Am I supposed to be a trail there? That's pretty heavily wooded in there.
Um, yeah, you're supposed to be able to, you, there is a trail system that comes across to the wetland, and then it's going to come out to that corner, not directly at the intersection, but in this corner, and then you walk along the sidewalk and then back in, next to the, next to, between 8 and 12, Medway Branch.
Okay.
Just land it, if you want, it's the same.
Oh, good, because there's a, there's a boardwalk in there too, isn't there, that brings you here?
No, this is, no, this one is, this is the other one, this is the one for the front section of where the, this is what we're going to be seeing next, next meeting, which, after this A&R, we could, we could go through if you want to. This is the, this is the development of, this is the development of the former farm stand area, that we're going to be seeing, this is not the back, this is not the, the trail system in the back.
Now, that's not on the agenda for tonight, though.
Right, she's saying next meeting.
Your next meeting.
The reason, the reason Andrew is bringing up the whole trail system over in this area is because the, the intent, because I, is that one of those meetings, is, they're planning on sort of a boardwalk crossing in this wetland area, which would bring you from this side over to the back over here, so that's why having a trail system to bring you out is crucial, because there's no need for a boardwalk if you can't go in and walk, you know, once you get across.
Right, because like I was saying, it's very heavily wooded in there right now, there's no trail right now.
No, but you, you are, the, the purpose is to get from the intersection of...
Tucker and Medway Branch.
Tucker and Medway Branch, go on a diagonal to get to...
Over to Rockwood.
To get to Rock, Boardman and Rockwood, go through the property, so, so there is going to be a cut there, and then for people, for people who want to get back to where their car might be located over by Rockwood, you walk down the sidewalk and then back in, because as, as, as...
Steve.
As Steve said, we cut out, we cut out the loop internal to the site by putting them out on the sidewalk, because we couldn't afford it.
Could have put lights on there so the kids can walk through there on the way home from school, I'm kidding.
All right, just, just so that I understand, because I haven't really participated in the Gump's discussion, so, let's put that aside for a minute. There was a plan, correct, for these, these parcels, right, there, so this is a modification, a preliminary plan.
A preliminary plan.
So...
This is the only real one.
You guys had endorsed in November, October, last year, you guys had endorsed any of our plans.
That one.
Yeah, so, I guess what I'm saying is, if there are no trails on there, I, you know, we shouldn't be discussing, in my opinion, trails unless, you know, these modifications are going to create some type of issue vis-à-vis trails that were included in some original plan.
Well, we always know that there's trails here, if we know that there's trails here, we should always bring up...
It was the, it was the, it was whether or not a legal easement was needed for the Lot 4A, because we put on a, when we, when we record these A&R plans, we record them with the easements, and there was talk of an easement, a legal, a pedestrian, a public access easement across a property.
Is there an easement on that one?
That doesn't exist.
Okay, and what, I guess what I'm saying is... And what, I guess what I'm saying is, you know, you participate in other discussions with CPC, and you're involved with, with Gumps, and there may have been discussions, but I don't recall any discussions with this board as far as easements, and we have something that goes back to October, November, where there were no discussions of easements, so I'm not really in favor of tying up this around some concern over easements that weren't brought up, you know, last year.
I totally understand what you're saying, but I think I was, I think I was more thinking out loud, and the way the conversation went was we could see a way around, we could see a way to stay on the town property, and therefore, we found a reason, we found a reason on the plan why they may not have included something. So, there was never going to, so we, so the conversation wasn't going to hold up the A and R.
Okay.
It was, it was...
Okay. Okay. So we can proceed with the A and R?
Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So any other concerns with the A and R at this point?
No.
Gino?
No.
Okay. We have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the new A and R, uh, plan for the Gump's property on, uh, Rockwood Road.
That was last revised on September...
That was last revised on 10/17/12.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So, next item of business is to, um, review the as-built for occupancy of Norfolk Grange. So, uh, Tom, I see we are in possession here of a document drafted by David Sanderson from your offices, so would you like to introduce that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just as background information, what happens when we get an as-built plan? We go out and look at it for two different purposes. One is to make sure that the plan complies with the content requirements of an as-built set forth in the board's rules and regulations. The second thing we look at is actually the status of construction, to make sure that the construction has been completed in accordance with the approved plan. And this memo contains a combination of comments that address both of those issues. Comment one, the plan needs to be signed and sealed by the surveyor of record. Comment two, location of exterior light should be provided. Three, at least one benchmark should be shown. Four, uh, there needs to be some seating in the area along the property line. Comment five is just a recommendation that they protect a, a carbon filter, which is a vent on the septic system, and it's, and it's in a vulnerable location in terms of being hit by a car, although it is in the location indicated on the approved plan. Six is just something missing, the gas meter should be shown. Seven, all doorways should be shown on the building. Comment eight, the exterior pedestrian light adjacent to the door should be shown. And finally, the bulkhead should be labeled. When the plan is updated, to reflect those, uh, missing items, and when the work is done, which I guess is just grass seating, uh, the plan should be complete at that point. So they need to come back with a slightly revised plan.
Any questions for, uh, for Tom? Okay.
So we can't sign it, right?
No. We'll have to continue that, so, um, maybe put it on, on the 30th? Well, okay.
But you...
Pretty straightforward, though, right?
Yes, not a problem, so.
So these comments will be given to?
Yes, to landmark engineer.
Tom, just a question. The benchmark that was removed that was in the 14-inch oak?
Yes.
Is that, I mean, it's not needed because there's the other one on it?
That's correct.
But is there...
They cut the tree down.
Right, is the other one in a tree that potentially could get touched down too?
The, the other one's on the front step of the building, which shouldn't have changed. So they just need to, it was shown on the design plan, it just needs to be redepicted on the as-built, so.
For down the road, in case, you know?
Civil engineer, the man's a civil engineer, what do you expect?
Tree on the other corner.
They're all in trees, and they cut them all down, so. Yeah. No, not vertically.
Wow, trees were moving, uh, earlier this week, I understand. An earthquake, so trees were moving, everything was...
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
If you put it, if you put a spike in the tree, the tree expands, it doesn't change. Trees do...
So, the next item, I think, is going to probably come up on the 30th, as far as the pumping station and some of the other things.
Oh, is that what that is?
Yeah, well, there's some other things that are related, if you will, that we'll deal with at the same time, but...
Betsy, do you have vouchers?
I do.
Okay. Uh, as far as next meetings, we're on for the 30th, we're on for the 15th, um, and then town meeting is the 29th. So we're posted, will be posted for that, so, um, I don't see a need to get anything else on the calendar unless folks want to look out into December. We can wait till the 30th, if you'd like.
I think it might be valuable.
You want to get something on the calendar now?
To schedule something in December, because...
Tentative date, at least?
Yeah, because anybody that comes in on the 30th, um, two weeks, a meeting two weeks later, they may not have the engineering done.
The 13th?
Or the 11th.
Or the 11th. Tuesday or Thursday? I can't do the 11th, I don't know. And you missed coming, so we should work around you.
Is this December we're looking at?
Yeah.
13th? I already know you can't do December 11th.
Oh, looks like that week is open there, Jeff.
I'm thinking.
It looks like the 11th or the, we're, we're looking for the 11th or the 13th. Um, and, and Greg can't make the 11th. I'm free both, thanks. Hey, body's a body. The 8th, the, I mean, obviously, the 8th, the week of the 18th starts getting really messy.
That's a little tight.
I'm, I'm available for, for both at this point, so, yeah.
Do you want to do the 11th, so you don't get into holiday rush?
You're not a number 11? Don't go after, don't go beyond...
Do we not want to try and go the week prior, just because it will have been, how many, four weeks?
Is it?
Your birthday's the 11th?
The 12th?
Be 50 years old?
On the 11th or on the 12th?
So he won't be here, he's going to be whisked away for some party.
12, 12, 2012, and we won't have it on the 11th.
That's okay.
No, I'm sure you're going to be whisked away if, if it's your 50th, some big surprise.
I'm going to stay in bed on the 12th. The sheets over, you know, the covers over my ass.
Yeah, I didn't celebrate my 50th, I can tell you that.
Okay.
I'm on the 49th annual.
The 11th is fine. You want to schedule the 11th?
I'm just wondering, I mean, at that point, it's going to have been, what, six, almost six weeks since our last scheduled meeting, if we do the 15th, right?
So do the 4th?
We got town meeting on the 29th, um...
So, so how about the 4th?
Three.
That's okay.
That way we don't, that way we don't conflict with any potential birthday surprises.
Yeah, can't, can't, yeah, yeah, that'd be bad.
Might have something special planned.
That you just don't know about.
All right, the 4th?
4th.
4th, okay, we're going.
Can you make the 4th?
No.
No.
Sorry. Can you make the 6th?
Yes, I could do the 6th, I believe so.
You're not going to turn 50 on the 17th?
No.
Or 30?
No. Not yet.
So which day? Okay, I'm available either 4th or 6th are okay for me.
Should we shoot for the 6th?
December 7th is there, or is that...
Okay, that's fine.
The 6th?
Now you have a whole week to do the work.
Oh, my God, December 6th, okay.
Are consultants available?
Yes, yeah.
Okay.
May have a conflict, but I could probably be here, I just might be a little bit late.
Okay.
We just can't go beyond midnight, because it'll be Pearl Harbor.
That's right.
Sign.
That's the day John Lennon died, too.
Did he die on Pearl Harbor Day, really?
I think it was the 7th.
Well, not a good day all in all.
Or was it the, it was either the 7th or the 8th, my husband would know.
Okay. Okay. Meeting minutes? Meeting minutes, how we doing with the minutes, Michelle?
They're all reviewed, the ones that are here, anyway. We still have a couple... Is that all we're missing, is just one meeting?
Yeah, just the last thing, yeah.
Yes, I did review them all and provided comments to Betsy. Some of my comments were inaccurate, but...
Oh, we didn't get to this last meeting, because we wrapped up our last meeting, I think we adjourned at midnight or afternoon.
I did provide her comments on all of them.
Well, you can just have us approve them with your edits.
She included them in what's in front of you.
They've already redone with your edits? Wow.
Okay.
Yeah.
Betsy and I keep busy during the week, so...
Do I have a motion? Motion to accept the minutes?
Accept my own minutes?
Yeah, yeah.
I can?
Somebody get them?
You're the one that may take responsibility.
You're the one that makes the motion.
Uh, do we have to do one at a time? Can we do both together?
We can do both.
Move to accept the meeting minutes dated September 6th and September 18th, 2012, as submitted.
Further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Apparently, I've moved to accept the mini, meeting minutes in the past. She doesn't have to, she can do her own.
Oh, really?
Have you read the minutes?
That's why I'm surprised, I don't think I've ever moved to accept the minutes before.
Really?
No, I don't think I have. I will make it a new habit.
Okay. So, in terms of the proposed zoning articles, zoning-related articles for town meeting, we had targeted October 30th for public hearing, and it needed to be postponed until the 15th of November, so is that now a definite? Because I, I had requested and I have received the...
That's the last day we can possibly do it.
So you're solid as far as the 15th now, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, that's fine.
Because you can go, you can use this as, as the basis.
And I, I'm still unsure whether or not they're going to include the flood map.
It's on the back.
It's on the back, but they haven't opened the warrant to accept it, so I mean, we can always just move forward with our public hearing, so I mean...
Is there, can we, can we make a formal request?
Well, I actually got something from, uh, Marianne today. Marianne said today that, you know, they are trying to, um, include it in the, in the warrant, so...
They made a statement, right, and she thought that they might open the warrant and accept it to them.
Wasn't there the issue, too, of the earthwork removal that the edits we made were not incorporated?
They are now incorporated.
They are, okay.
They now are incorporated, and, and we have graciously submitted the article.
Oh, have we?
Yes.
I told them that we would, provided that they made the edits.
Smart woman. Smart woman.
Yeah, there you go, you're right. Who was it originally submitted by?
The Board of Selectmen, but they, I, I actually did, I listened to this Board of Selectmen meeting, um, to hear them say that they, they would like us to, to do that. I was actually looking, I was looking to see if they had any, if they had any opinion on the zoning. I ran into, and so did you, Jeff, for, you, for a second before the meeting, you ran into an advisory board member who asked if the planning board would be available to talk about the zoning? At the next meeting? His next meeting?
Yeah, I mean, he asked if, uh, I was available next week, which I'm not.
Right, right.
So, he said that they weren't originally planning on meeting the following week, but they would, um, consider doing that.
I, I had a, I had, um, a, probably a minute and a half longer with him than you did, um, which speaks a bit to my delay coming. And, um, he, I, I had asked if we could defer our recommendations until after the public hearing, and he said, no. That they have to have a, um, they have to have their decisions by the 7th, on the 7th. So they were hoping that we would have some discussion on this on October 30th, and, and I had said perhaps, speaking, speaking totally out of school, I said perhaps we could have some, we could give you some feedback on some of the articles, but we may not be able to give you feedback on all of the articles as early as the 30th. And that was completely out of school, but he needs, they would like something sooner than, and he, it was his understanding that they've never waited for our public hearing to make their recommendation.
Let me, um, let me follow up with that, because, you know, my...
Sometimes they don't make a recommendation until town meeting floor.
Right, right. And I, and I, I'm not aware of a requirement that the planning board, um, issue a recommendation for or against. I think as long as there's a report of some kind from the planning board...
Well, we recommend for or against.
It, no, there is a requirement for, against, for town meeting.
Yeah, for town meeting, but I see, I, I don't believe that it'd be prudent to make any type of for or against before a public hearing.
No, absolutely not.
He, yeah.
Have that public hearing first.
It's, it's a, but, but the caveat on, the caveat on subject to town meeting, the, the board, the board has, you know, either, either, you know, strongly supports, is still looking into, you know, has no issue, a indication, um, is what he's looking for.
Well, I think in terms of what I'm willing to provide as chair, and, you know, other folks, uh, you know, feel free to communicate with the advisory, um, committee, but, you know, in terms of my, uh, my commitment is to update them on what we are doing to prepare ourselves for town meeting, and, uh, we will do that. And in a few minutes, you know, I'll discuss and describe what we are doing, what our consultants are doing to try to prepare for town meeting and try to provide, uh, the best information possible so that informed decisions can be made. Informed decisions can be made by the residents at town meeting, but also informed decisions by the individual members of the board. So, um, so I'm prepared to update, but in terms of anything beyond that, I mean, I, I wouldn't be comfortable, you know, doing that, um, two weeks from now, given that the public hearing is not at this point until November 15th, and that's, that's outside of our control, the fact that that date has been pushed out to the 15th, but certainly not our choice. It's, the way the calendar falls with the, the timing of the language here for the warrant.
That, that makes perfect sense. I can't, I, speaking for myself, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go to the advisory board and give them anything but an update.
I think, I, I'm not an expert in terms of, you know, the advisory committee, um, you know, I've met with them a few times, but, you know, if, if I'm on the advisory committee, I just want to, I would want to know that, um, that in this case, the planning board will be prepared for town meeting. And if there's, um, some things that are required from a statutory standpoint, we'll certainly provide that, and that might be, um, you know, something which is more of a status report and, uh, a, uh, a deferral in terms of the final recommendation to town meeting, so...
Our statutory requirement is to the town moderator. To give, to have, to have a recommendation for town meeting.
At town meeting, yeah.
At town meeting, and if we give it to her 24 hours or, you know, 36 hours ahead of time, she, she can read it. That's our, that's our...
We've given our recommendations the night of.
Yeah, I know, but it's certainly...
We've given it...
It is, it is, but at the same time, we... Any...
Should be resolved two weeks...
Speaking of other... Speaking of former planning boards, speaking for other boards I've been on, I mean, you prepare... You tell town meet... You tell the town moderator ahead of time what to expect.
We should be able to tell plenty of times.
You know, you can't usually... Usually you give her the stuff so she can read it for you. That's common. That's common.
And I guess...
Or if we're going to do a presentation.
Yeah.
We have our presentation. We give them... We have the presentation ready.
You know, and I don't want this to be a bureaucratic exercise, and I don't want folks to feel as though it's going to be a bureaucratic exercise. I think the facts are that the zoning bylaw study committee met, okay? There were a series of meetings. Steve participated in just about every one. There were modifications that were proposed to the zoning bylaws. Fair enough, and certainly appreciate the time people spent proposing those modifications and making those available to this board and other boards within the town. I think the challenge is that there were no other... There was no other information provided in terms of, you know, specifics as to, you know, why the changes were being proposed and any type of analysis in terms of understanding the implications of the changes. So, we're now, and that's basically a segue here, our consultants here, Tom Houston, Gino Carlucci, they're in fact working on that now to basically take the core as well as the greater B1 and lower B1 to look at individual parcels that would be impacted by the changes to the bylaws and to express those changes in very practical terms so that people like myself that don't deal with zoning all the time can fully appreciate the type of development that's possible today versus development that would be possible tomorrow where the bylaws to be approved. So, that's in fact a work in process. So, to your point, Andrea, in terms of having anything more than a status report for the advisory committee, it's not realistic and it's not really fair to these gentlemen because they're trying to complete that exercise. And it's something that takes more time than the typical bylaw, even the zoning bylaws that we may propose at town meeting. This is, you know, something that is going to take a little bit more time, it's a little bit more complex, and needs to be expressed, I think, in practical terms for town meeting so that people that attend town meeting can understand, understand what they're being asked to vote on.
And, yeah, I think that I was probably jumping ahead, assuming that... And you can speak to it directly rather than me jump ahead. It was... I assumed that that analysis spoke to some of these articles, but not all of them.
Correct.
And I see it... And so, you might want to speak to which ones it does affect and which one it doesn't because I think that what I didn't say, but what I meant, was that there are some of these that aren't affected by that, and we probably have a pretty good sense of where we're going.
Well, I think part of what our consultants...
And I really appreciate the effort that you put our consultants into because that's what was missing at the last meeting, and it was... I really appreciate that level of attention.
And what really has to be brought out is that whole confusion of units...
Versus density.
And lots and square feet because there's just too many definitions within the same description.
Right.
And none of them make any sense. So, a lot of these things, before we're going to change them, we should change... We should change the whole language of it so that it all... So, all of them go together instead of having one describe a lot and another one describe, you know, like units per square foot and another one, you know...
Has to be common and consistent quantitative measurement that we're using.
It's just... I didn't realize what a mess it was until we started looking at them.
Well, I mean, you're talking about a more substantial undertaking in terms of, you know, taking a fresh look, clean sheet of paper, if you will, at zoning, so we're not... I don't think you're suggesting that we defer.
But they have to bring up the fact that where the confusion lies. That's what it is.
If we... If through their work, we get a clear density... A clear unit of density, and we put that language into the proposed zoning, I would like to have the discussion at the next meeting of perhaps the planning board taking a view, taking a look at the zoning bylaw and changing the unit of measure across it. That we don't have to... That we bring that recommendation to the zoning bylaw study committee for their evaluation to see if it interferes with any of the other boards' interactions. But that we use this. We establish the unit of measure that makes the most sense, and then at the next fall meeting, we integrate it into zoning.
I mean, my concern is that the zoning bylaw study committee, they were charged to do something. And they spent a good part of the summer, you know, meeting and discussing the existing zoning and making their recommendations, and it's a formal process. It's an open process. And, you know, votes were taken. I think you were in agreement with, I think, all but one, Steve.
Well, a couple.
Well, I mean, there was a vote, right?
Yeah. There's more than one that I did not vote for.
Okay. So, and we'll certainly get into those conversations, but first of all, I don't think it's within my scope of authority to now say that we're going to put that aside and do something different. I mean, you know, I'm chairman of the planning board, but ultimately, there was a process. The planning board is just one participant with other boards and committees in terms of that zoning bylaw study committee. So, I don't think this board, you know, can really change the game plan at this point in time. Well, I'm not comfortable with that.
I can tell you, just if you look at it, you can tell that it was not a holistic view. It was picking and choosing sections. So, if you looked, it was I-4A-11 and I-7A, and, you know, there were... It was picking and choosing. The problem that we have now is that when we started looking at it, all of a sudden, we looked at it holistically and said, "Oh, this doesn't make any sense. There's conflicts between all of these things." That's what happened when we looked at it.
"We" meaning who?
Last meeting.
This board.
The planning board. The zoning bylaw study committee meeting... The zoning bylaw study committee was only looking at little sections. They weren't looking at it holistically, so they didn't realize where the conflicts were. They didn't realize that there were conflicts. It's only when it got here that it was obvious that there were a lot of conflicts.
I think perhaps the greatest that we could do, given that these are actual warrants, right, they're actual articles, all we could really do is give our recommendation, and we could recommend that we feel there are inconsistencies and that, you know, that perhaps we don't adopt it with this given language and that we wait to revise it at such time until...
A substitute... A substitute emotion. A substitute amendment with suggested language.
But I think what you're saying is it really does require a much larger study to understand the full comprehensive nature of how pervasive these articles are in relation to other portions of the current zoning bylaws, which could be a huge undertaking, which I'm not sure that we'd be prepared enough to be able to modify language in these pieces and parts that then speak to the greater document in a way that's prepared enough.
What is your task? It's actually easier for them to do than you think.
Well, I tried to explain. Let's... We're trying to take what can be complex, okay, and difficult to understand, and to make it more simple to understand. And that doesn't mean that, you know, corners need to be cut or it needs to be less than robust. The reason why I believe it's possible to express this in simple terms, okay, that I can understand in terms of, you know, the implications is because there's very few parcels that are affected by some of the zoning bylaw changes that are being proposed. So, these gentlemen have been charged with responsibility to look at specific parcels and basically look at a before and after in terms of the implications of these changes on those parcels. And so, we're going to take the complex because I agree with you. You have square feet. You got lots. You got bedrooms. I mean, we've got all kinds of stuff here which, you know, I'm learning about, learning pretty quick at this point. But we're going to do that, and, you know, we're going to try to stay consistent with the charter of the zoning bylaw study committee. And I recognize and respect, Steve, if you've got some disagreements, and there'll be opportunities, you know, amongst this board through public hearings. We have town meeting. But, you know, we really can't go back and shelve the work of the zoning bylaw study committee. We're just one participant in that process.
I... That's where just a small difference of opinion lies. We are the ones responsible for the zoning in town by statute. The zoning bylaw study committee is making sure that zoning that planning board implements, zoning bylaw does variances of, isn't inconsistent with things that the health and the conservation are doing. But it's... The zoning is... When a planning board member at the zoning bylaw study committee has a problem with it, he's speaking from a greater base of experience because he works with it every single meeting.
Okay, this is the first I'm hearing that there's a need to shelve what the zoning...
Never said shelve.
No, but what are we talking about?
What I have been speaking of since the very beginning is the possibility of modifying language. If the language here doesn't... If the language here... If the language here doesn't... Isn't... Can't be interpreted simply, easily, readily. Modifying the language, I'm not suggesting... That's what I'm suggesting. And the reason I keep... The reason I've been saying I'd like to get this done as soon as we can is because I was hoping for an opportunity to bring potential language to the Portis Leckman so they could hear a change, change the warrant article, and if not there, then as a friendly amendment. Do you know the difference between a friendly amendment and an amended amendment on the floor? A friendly amendment is brought forward with the agreement of all parties so it can be actually read from the podium.
Okay.
So, it's... So, I was...
So, I understand, you know, your feeling that the zoning is to the point where it's so conflicted that we can't accept with minor modification potentially the bylaw changes that have been proposed by the zoning bylaw.
You're putting words in my mouth. You are.
Then, Andrea, what we're talking about doing is expressing these changes in terms that we can understand and that the residents of the town can understand. What is the problem with that?
But we can have a recommendation to not vote for it or to vote for it.
You personally can, absolutely.
No, this board can say they do not recommend it.
And we will, and we will, Steve.
Yeah.
But in the 11th hour now, to... You know, this is basically...
It's not the 11th hour. We've been talking about this for a month now.
Steve, Steve, check the record, okay? Check the record. Aside from talking about, you know, some concerns with one specific bylaw, okay? One specific bylaw, there was some concern that was discussed, and we acknowledge there's some confusion. And the point was made. You made it, Andrea, in terms of understanding the implications. We're trying to do that, okay? We will do that, okay? We will do that. And so, what I'm suggesting is that we stay consistent now, you know, these gentlemen...
I don't think it's 11th hour. We had this presented to us for the first time last meeting. That's the first time I saw these articles, and we raised objection last meeting. And I walked out of here thinking I would vote against these.
Some of these, not all of them.
Well, I don't know. I don't know.
Because you and I don't understand the implications, but that is exactly what we're trying to do.
I don't feel that it was well-vetted. I don't think that it was well-coordinated. I feel it's premature. I don't think... As much as the work I appreciate was done, I think it's putting the cart before the horse a little bit. I don't think that work is a complete piece of work, and I don't feel comfortable presenting something for the town to vote on that I don't feel was completely thought through. I don't think that's a professional or ethical or appropriate thing to do.
Well, I don't see a need for people to make those decisions this evening when we've yet to review what these gentlemen are working to...
That's fine, but I don't want to be told that we're in 11th hour making this decision and why we're changing course because I don't feel like we were on a course and we're changing course.
No, but the zoning bylaw study committee, they're done with their work.
Right.
This has been going on for... When was the first meeting, Steve? So, in terms of the 11th hour...
Probably at the end of July.
That's my point. I mean, the 11th hour, I mean, those folks, they're under the impression they're done.
They may very well be done.
So, you know, so it's the 12th hour. I mean...
No, no, for them it is, but it's not for the planning board.
It's not. That's why we're doing some work, Andrea.
And that's why I don't understand why you think that there would be a vote against this stuff because the purpose of doing the work is to understand it. And I think it's quite possible that if someone like Michelle or I, who work in zoning, can understand it, then it's quite possible that their work is going to come up with a different way of saying it that is more clear. And if there's a different way of saying it that's more clear, then that's something that we've got a responsibility to bring forward because this stuff lives for many, many years and gets interpreted by a lot of different lawyers, and it's got to be as clear as possible.
And I think my concern about potentially modifying is that it may trickle down to a whole lot of other areas that aren't represented in these articles. And should we present changes to our bylaws that are comprehensive? In this, you know, piecemeal kind of way, we're putting these out now, and then next fall, we'll come back and we'll do the ones that we didn't get because we wanted to change the wording, and now it doesn't work anymore. I don't think it's as simple as just modifying these and then we feel better about it. That's my personal opinion. I feel it's...
When we discuss them, I don't want to necessarily discuss in detail, but let's identify the ones that I think fall into this category of concern, okay, that you're discussing. But I just want to reiterate, I'm committed to a process, and if at the end of that process individuals on this board can't support the proposed article, so be it. But to basically now say, "We're not even going to go through that process. We've heard enough..."
Nobody said that. No, no, no.
Well, then, what do we disagree over then?
I don't know.
Well, then, let's get on with it, okay? No, what we disagree over is because I was hearing that the zoning is, my word, conflicted to the point where we need to go back and take a look.
That's what we discovered. That's what we discovered.
Well, you discovered. You discovered.
In our last meeting, that's when everyone was looking and looked at it.
But that doesn't necessarily mean that it's... We got to shovel. We have to wait until all the zoning can be reassessed.
It's the references. When you look at the examples that they provided from other towns, other towns had things much more concise on how things should be decided and measured. Ours is... Has several different ways of doing things, which should all be changed to one concise way of measuring things. That's what we discovered when we were at our last meeting, when we were looking at it here. That's when we were looking at it here, and all of a sudden, we started looking through it. That's when we realized that there's a conflict between all of these...
Well, no, no, no. The conflict is you get into different units of measure. It gets very confused. You got square footage. You got lots. You got bedrooms.
You got bedrooms.
You've got bedrooms.
Okay, so, we agree, okay? I agree that it's confusing to somebody that doesn't do zoning all the time.
No, 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 it's confusing to people who do zoning all the time.
Well, I don't, I'm not sure about that, I mean, I asked Gino, and he published something for the board, okay, for the board, in terms of looking at other towns, and he was able to express in words, okay, he had about a one-sheet summary with an attachment where he said, "This is what exists and what's being proposed," okay, so he summarized.
No, no, what he said was, this is what he, what he said was, "This is what's proposed in other places," and what I said to him on the side was, "I tried to take your table of what other towns did, and translate this information, this unit of measure into that, and I wasn't smart enough to do it." And he said, "It's because it's a different language."
I guess, I guess what I want to be, what I want to be okay, coming out of this, this review, this clarification, this explanation process, I want there to still be two possible outcomes from this effort. I want one possible, three. One is, we just accept it as is, we're fine with it. Two is, we make some proposed, whether they be friendly or whatever, modifications. Three is, we don't agree it's at an okay spot, when our position as a board is, we don't support it, we don't recommend it. And I guess I don't want to prohibit any of those being an option by going through this exercise, so if we're-
I agree 100%.
Then that's, then I'm on board.
I mean, I haven't said that I'm in favor of all these bylaws, have I said that to anybody?
No, and, and I haven't said I'm against all of these bylaws either.
So, let's, that's why I don't want to get into too much detail until we have some facts, because the toughest thing to do is to, to say something and then have to backpedal after there's more facts on the table, and, you know, and you may, you, me, all of us may learn something as part of this process. So, let's just identify the specific proposals that these gentlemen are working on for us in terms of helping us prepare for, for a public hearing and town meeting, let's do that.
Can, can we, can we also first do that, and then can we second, go to each of the articles and ask if anybody has any questions that came up since they had a chance to read them the last time? Just so that we know, just so we know the breadth of questions?
Questions, but I, I really don't want to get into detailed discussions this evening.
Yeah, almost 11 o'clock.
Yeah, it's, it's late, unfortunately, we get to zoning here at the 11th hour.
Literally.
Okay.
Literally 11 o'clock, I get it now.
Okay, so, the first one, I'm looking at page four, the bottom of page four. Now, in fact, Gino, can I ask you, because you were actually involved in it-
In the middle of page four, the affordable housing?
Well, I'm looking at, okay, that's, I was talking zoning in particular, but go ahead, Gino, why don't you bring us through the articles that are relevant here to the Planning Board?
Well, yes, the first one is the affordable housing one. It's unfortunate that this draft doesn't include numbers or, they're all article blank. The first one had, adds some clarification about locating affordable units off-site, because there was some gray area in how it's calculated, and when it can be built off-site and site, so it attempts to clarify that a bit.
I want to, just as a point of information, I have, having read that through, I have some recommended word changes that I think make it more clear. Not change the meaning, just make it more clear.
This is submitted by the Planning Board.
Yes, right. So, whether we discuss it tonight or not, I have some suggested edits to make this more clear.
Why don't you just send the email to Betsy, she'll send it to all of us, and we can pick it up at the next meeting, let's do that.
Okay, okay. Did we, we were giving this electronically as a Word document?
Yeah, yeah, I got it.
Okay, so then what I'll do is, I will cut, I, I will put redline, I'll use redline strikeout.
Did I send it to everybody?
I think you did.
I'll, I'll use redline strikeout and send it to you, and then you can send it to everybody.
Great, perfect.
The next one is pertaining to clearing of land, and it's, right now, there's some confusion between the provision that limits clearing, whether it applies to residential as well as commercial sites. So, this, it's all in one paragraph currently, so this separates it into two paragraphs, and has one that pertains to non-residential uses and one to residential uses. And what, what this would do is allow clearing on individual lots within a subdivision, but, but it maintains the, the previously adopted bylaw that prohibits clearing within the setback area until an occupancy permit is issued. So, in other words, it would prevent clear cutting of an entire subdivision, but, but would allow work to proceed for stockpiling purposes, or equipment mobilization, or whatever is needed, it gives, gives more flexibility on how the construction takes place.
And Gino, we talked about a situation where you could have Form A lots that are contiguous, where this kind of relief would be helpful, it'd be appropriate, so that language didn't get incorporated into the-
I thought that was earth removal language.
Yes, that's, that's in the earth, that language is in the earth removal bylaw, which are closely related, but it's a little bit different.
So, Steve, you, you supported this bylaw?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, continue, Gino.
Next one pertains to one of the residential density measures by bedroom, and it would change the ratio of 16 bedrooms per lot to 32 bedrooms per lot.
This is one of the ones that would spark the flag.
So, this is, so this is part of the evaluation, this one is?
Yes.
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 Okay, the first two not, this one is?
Correct.
Good.
And basically, this is to support the concept where you can have retail on the first floor, and you can have second and third floor residential, so that the affordability, if you will, the lease for the first floor retail is at a price point that is supported by our downtown, in terms of the traffic that we have in downtown.
But, really, what became a question for us last time was this lot.
Yes.
And the lot could be, what was it?
4,000 square feet.
So.
Or 400,000 square feet.
Or 400,000, yeah.
So, it was the, it was the lack of clarity on, on the density that was, that was being approved, being addressed.
It's an unconventional measure of density.
That's right.
That was, so it's not the concept that, that the Zoning Bylaw Study Committee was trying to put forward, it was that unconventional unit of measure.
Well, and it's potentially allowing for a density that would just not be smart development.
Or, or, or possible to build.
Right, yes, right.
It may not even be possible to build.
Steve, can you help us with this one? I mean, did you, you supported this one, correct?
I, well, you know, I was convinced that they should be allowed to have the two stories above, so therefore, I, I went along with increasing it because, because of the description of having the, the, the second and third floor being residential on top of commercial. But, the, the last, when we started discussing it a couple of weeks ago, that's when the whole question about, well, what's a lot? That's when that came up, and that's when all of a sudden I realized, oh, that's an issue, because we're not defining what a lot is.
Now, I thought there's a 30,000 square foot within the core, how does that-
That's outside a PMLD. Right, there's two, that's the other confusing part, is there's two different requirements, whether you are part of a PMLD or not part of a PMLD. 30,000 square foot minimum if you're not in a PMLD, 8,000 square foot minimum if you are in a PMLD.
So, again, you could be trying to do this on an 8,000 square foot lot.
Or 4,000, when it gets changed later on.
And actually, a later change to make it a little more confusing is, they take one of the housing options that is now only allowed within a PMLD, and they take it out, and they make it a use by right, so it becomes-
The plot thickens.
It's interplay here.
That's the very next one.
So, something of that scale, that would be a PMLD though, as, you know, it's something like 32 bedrooms, correct? I mean-
Well, currently, yes.
Not with the change.
So, if it said, I'm just, if, if that was added, that it was relevant to PMLD?
But, it's actually being taken out.
Because for later on, there's a change, changes.
So, it's, it's making it a use by right.
Well, it's not necessarily a PMLD.
No, not, not as a-
Right, yeah, it's not necessarily a PMLD.
So, this, so this one, this one is, needs to, is confusing on its own, and gets more confusing when you look at others' proposals, so this is, this is where work needs to be done.
So, if we were asking for modification, it would be that we, we like the intent of increased density, how could we word this in a more conventional way that helps us meet that intent? That's as simple as you can get it.
And, and Michelle, I think all along, that's always been my intent, and, and I appreciate you articulating it so clearly, because perhaps I expressed a little too much passion last week, and, you know, but you just, you just described all I've ever been interested in, is what they're trying to do is good, it just doesn't make sense the way it's arranged.
Right, and the last thing we want to do is make it difficult, and, and make bad things happen from what is good intent.
Or make it only, only certain people understand what it means, and other, and other developers can't figure it out.
Okay, next, Gino.
The next one pertains to the requirement that mixed-use development contain no more than 65% of its space as residential. That, that's a current requirement, but right now, it says that that can only happen if it is part of a PMLD, and this article would remove the requirement that it be part of a PMLD, and let it stand on its own, which, by the way, it would still be subject to site plan review, but under this article, it would not have to be part of a planned unit development.
This is not an unreasonable one, this, this would apply to any site within the town that would want to redevelop. So, if someone wanted to redevelop a site, then this would apply to that particular lot, and they would not be tied to the, the restrictions, because they're not within a planned multi-lot development.
Yeah, I don't think this was one that we needed further evaluation on.
No, not really.
I, I thought this was only the core and the outer B1, isn't that where this section applies?
I thought it was just the core, isn't it just the core?
Yeah, this is just the core.
Oh, I have it as core and outer, so it's not, it's only any site within, not any site in town?
Any site within the business core.
Yeah, because one, I think, you know, 1-7A is the list, I don't know, it's a list of allow uses, that, that applies to in, 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 and outside the core.
So, it's all, it is in and-
In and out.
Inner core and the whole B1, yeah, and out. Can we, were you thinking of illustrating this?
Yes.
Where, good, okay, because you say we don't have a question with it, I just don't, I can't visualize it.
Okay, but as it stands now, you supported it and still support it?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, next.
Next one, this is the one, we've talked about it before, it just increases the height maximum from 40 to 46, for the purpose of accommodating pitched roof lines, which is specified in the article, that, that's the only reason that additional height would be allowed. The, the conventional height of 40 feet remains, and then this is just an exception for pitch roofs.
Unless they have a pitch roof, yeah.
Okay, so, you were okay with it, and you're still okay with it?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
And, and I have no problem with this, I don't think there's anything that needs to be explained about this.
Okay, next.
The only issue I'd raise is that there's an overarching protection of stories, and you may want to address the issue of mezzanines, because mezzanines are not defined as stories, but you can get four occupied living levels under this.
Can you write something up for a friendly amendment?
Sure.
Would we be opposed to that? I mean, as long as it's with the height, I don't know that we would.
I don't know, I'm saying it's a, it's a fact that a mezzanine is not counted as a story, so, within a 46-foot-high building, you can have four occupied floor levels. I'm not saying whether that's good or bad, I'm just making you aware, that's-
Well, what is the definition of a mezzanine? Can you actually-
It's a floor area that occupies less than one-third of the building area. So, if you get, like, it's like a, a common use would be a loft in the upper space of a building, for example. So, you get living level above the third floor. Not to say that's bad, I just want to make you aware that-
So, I think the question is, as you who sat in on this, was the intent to keep three sto, three levels-
Three levels, yeah, that was the intent.
Maximum, and this fourth level would be objectionable.
Right.
No, I mean-
No, that's what she's asking, that's my question.
What I'm saying is, have it written, and then when we get through as part of the public hearing, we'll have some language we can either choose to adopt it or not, but at least we'll have some language, until you put to, to writing some of this stuff.
It was never intended to allow a fourth level in, allowing something like a mezzanine, it was always intended to only have three levels.
And, and that's, and it says here, shall not exceed three stories, and it's the word stories that he's asking to define.
Right, three stories and mezzanines, if you want that.
Three, or three habitable levels, something, or something like that.
Yeah, it's language, something, if he wanted to limit it, it's something like, that the height shall not exceed-
If you're defining a density, and you're defining a height, and they can happen to fit four levels in there, I'd say, why not?
Yes, because they might be counted as bedrooms, then we run into the other one.
Yeah, but as long as all the other, this goes to sort of the consistency, and if they're all matching together, and that's what the developer can get in there, then so be it.
Well, that's, that's worth discussing.
Next one pertains to parking requirements for dwelling units. Right now, the only residential parking requirement is two for a single-family dwelling. This would add a, a new category called dwelling unit other than a single-family dwelling, and have a parking requirement of one per unit, as opposed to two.
With the assumption that it's downtown, people will have fewer cars if they're taking the train.
And dwelling units, all capitalized, so it's in zoning already?
Yes.
This one, I think, is straightforward and non-controversial.
It is, yeah.
I can't believe it hasn't been previously included in the bylaws, somehow it just was never in there.
So, Steve, you supported it, and you still support it?
The next one is one we talked about a bit previously as well, regarding on-street parking and how it counts towards a parking requirement, whereas currently, it only counts if at least 66% of the space directly abuts the property. This would eliminate that and make it, make the count be in accordance with the provisions of the shared parking requirement. So, in other words, on a block of a street, any of the spaces on the street could count for a particular property, as long as it met the shared parking standards that are in another section of the bylaw.
We discussed this a little bit the last meeting, so you supported it, you still support it?
And, nobody raised any objections at the last meeting?
There was no issues with the use of lot in this particular definition, is from what I remember, right?
Right?
Yeah.
And then, on a related one, the, this is, that doesn't quite, by itself, standing by itself, it doesn't quite state exactly what it is, unless you're looking at the current article, but 1-6A says that to count, for a parking space to count for your property, it has to be within 450 feet, and this changes it to 500 feet, it's kind of a companion to the shared parking one.
Who put the note in?
I did, I'm surprised they included my notes in the one.
Yeah?
Yeah, that was kind of a note for another change that, because right now, we require in the zoning, parking to be linked, and that's going to be awkward with dense development, with, you know, buildings, zero setback on the side, and it might be able to link in the back, but I just thought we might want to have some flexibility in that. But that's another, that would be another separate thing.
All right, so Steve, you supported it?
Oh, that was my recommendation.
And you still support it, right?
But Jeff, since the warrant includes this note, should we consider what Gino is saying?
Well, this isn't the warrant.
This is a draft.
I know, it's the draft, which means that, it's sitting in the draft, which means that it's within the scope of things that could be discussed.
Next town meeting.
Okay, okay, okay.
This would extend the, outside the business core B1 district to Paul Kelly's property on map 14, lot 49, lot 11, six and a half acres. It originally also included the Kids' Place site, and...
That was taken out.
That was taken out, yeah.
So I'd want to see that graphically.
You'd want to...
I don't know Paul Kelly's, I don't know the property off the top of my head, so personally, I don't want to see it graphically.
We're going to prepare a physical amendment to the zoning map that'll show it. That's a requirement anyways.
I don't need to see it right this minute, I just mean as we go forward.
It's got it right here. Well, there's a, the boundary, this is, this was the boundary, this includes Kids' Place, the yellow, yellow portion, so it's smaller than what this, what this yellow portion, if you can all see it from...
Well, we all know where it is, it's just, it's just...
Yeah, she could take a look at it.
What's it, like, seven acres or something like that?
Six and a half.
And the pen, the pen line identifies that the...
Roughly, yeah.
Could be...
All right, so Steve, you were on board with that?
Why are you questioning me about whether I've changed my mind on these things?
Steve, because you changed your mind on one of them that resulted in a fairly substantial amount of discussion and confusion and conflict.
Well, why would I change my mind between the last time we discussed it and tonight?
This is Borden.
Steve, I think the fact that you represented the planning board at that zoning bylaw study committee, I think it's totally reasonable for me to understand what your position was on each and every one of these articles. You disagree?
Well, we discussed it two weeks ago, you knew my position on these two weeks ago. Why do, why am I being questioned for any...
Well, because one of them, you didn't tell me...
Do you do it now, do you go along with it now and not go along with it then?
You didn't tell me two weeks ago that one of these you don't support now, that you did support when the zoning bylaw study committee voted on it. I learned that this evening.
No, no, I voted against them when I was at the meeting.
I was told that you voted against one article.
I voted against two articles.
Okay, so let's just be clear, okay, so one of them...
This is a railroad track.
That's the railway.
I've got one that was relative, these aren't numbered, but the one that dealt with density, residential density, that you voted in favor of that with the zoning bylaw study committee, but you're opposed to it because of some learning at our last meeting, yes?
Which one are you talking about?
Page 4A11.
Page five.
Page five.
Right here, this one. It's okay, Steve, I just need to know.
This, I never said I was against it. Oh, are you talking about what we discussed tonight? And that was because of our discussion two weeks ago, that I said that there's confusion in these things that has to be straightened out. Yeah, I didn't say that I had changed my mind specifically about the article that we've got here. I'm just saying that we have to do something about making sure that we get rid of the confusion.
Agreed, okay. But at the time, based on what you knew and the context of the discussions at the time with the zoning bylaw study committee, you were in favor of it, but now we've subsequently...
Which is why I said, when we looked at them, we were looking at a section, we were looking at I-4A11, we were only discussing that.
Okay, that's fine.
Just highlighted.
But I will keep score, because it's important to me to know where you stand on these issues.
So then when we discuss I-4, I-7A, you know, you're not looking at these things completely in context.
I understand, but at least I have some idea in terms of what happened with the zoning bylaw study committee, and it gives me some flavor of the conversations then versus the conversations now. It's important, it's important to me, okay.
So are we...
So you're on the next one, Gino, which is page seven, about halfway down?
Yeah, the next one is not a zoning bylaw, it's the earth removal bylaw that we talked about earlier, and the, it does two things. It removes the word stockpiled ore from the existing bylaw in order to clarify that, again, related to clearing and earth removal on subdivisions, that it's okay to remove earth within the subdivision and keep it on there, not, that's, that's okay. And then the phrase was added, "ore contiguous parcels under common ownership," to apply that same principle to A&R lots, if there's three or four A&R lots in a row, or even if they're not A&R lots, but just property that someone has owned for 30 years, that earth could be removed, could be moved within that property.
This is, this is a second article where, when you read it now, shifting around of the words would, would help. And so I'll send that to Betsy as well, because parcel of land is a description, and we separated parcel of land and put parcel, or contiguous parcels under common ownership of land, and the of land becomes a floater. So I actually would just move that, I'd move the new phrase to behind of land. And then when you go further into the sentence, within the town, to another parcel, either within or, and then you're either within or without the town, there's something missing there. There's something missing after the or.
Without should be outside the town.
So it should say...
That's existing language, but it should, I think it should be changed to outside instead of without. I think without is what they intended, but it's clearer if we say outside.
So to another parcel either within or outside the town?
Yes.
So to another parcel, okay, to another, okay, either inside the town boundary or outside the town boundary?
Yes.
Okay, that's the, I had confusion with that. And then I had, and then I just think the, I think parcel of land should stay together as a descriptor, and the or should be at the end after land.
Definitely.
Okay, so do you want me to redline that? Yeah, that's, okay.
And, and then, and then again, what's shown as item four, the words including construction on individual lots as well as roadways, because it currently says moving into a stockpile within a subdivision under construction is exempt. This is a list of exemptions, but that has been interpreted to mean construction on the roadways, but not the individual lots. So it was asked to add this language so that it's clear that it also includes individual lots.
Somewhere else in the, in the earth removal, we speak to the fact that stockpiles are supposed to be temporary, right?
Um...
Because I...
I believe so, and it also, oh, well, it says in here, it has to be 500 feet from...
A lot with an occupancy permit.
Yeah, and I think there's, I'm pretty sure there's something in there about stabilizing the pile within a certain amount of time. I could be wrong.
On four there?
Yeah.
It would allow them to put on a road. Now, the house might not be occupied, and I mean, presumably, there's two points of egress, but emergency vehicles, where if our truck gets there and a big pile of dirt in the middle of the road, and then they have to go back and around the other side. So I wonder if there should just be something that, you know, I don't know how you could work it in or not, but...
What you're saying is, you don't want the stockpile to interfere with circulation?
Right.
Even, even during construction?
Right. You always have to still maintain emergency vehicle access.
Okay. Can I add that?
Of course, the last two pages are the most complicated.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, the very, that 1-4B3 absolutely is completely un...
I don't understand it all.
Okay, so this one, I know, Steve, you had issue with this one?
Yes, I actually had issue with both of these.
Both of these? This is the two?
Yeah. Okay. When it came right down to it, the reason I didn't like both of them is because I didn't like having both of them on the warrant, so therefore, I didn't want either of them. But if I had to pick one, I think the top one makes much more sense than the bottom one.
I, I don't want to speak out of term, but I did understand, I did understand what the top one's trying to do, and, and you're asking, tonight, we're saying that this is going to be part of the evaluation, but it, but it's in language, at least, at least it's clear what people are asking and what the planning board, under what conditions the planning board might approve it. So at least, at least there's some predictability to, to the top one, whereas the bottom one is just, it's really...
Chibber jabber. Sorry.
It's what?
Confusing.
It's, it's, there's more to it, there's more to it than meets the eye, because there's not much here. There must be more to it that meets the eye, because this by itself doesn't say, I don't know what it says.
The top one?
No, the bottom.
The bottom one?
Well, the top one's a brand-new one. That was Gino's language.
Right.
So that's why it makes sense.
That's why it makes sense.
With that, with that introduction, explain, you know, why and what, if you will.
It was requested that provision be made to allow variations from the dimensional requirements of the B1 district. And actually, it was only for outside the business core was requested, that's why I have the note here about 1-4B2, which is inside the, which is the business core, should it apply to that, too. So, so this, the initial request was just to allow variances by, by approval, upon approval by the planning board as part of the PMLD process. Since it's a special permit, it would be discretionary in your part. But this provides some standards and criteria by which to make a decision to vary those requirements. And what I did was not to take, not to, not that I wouldn't, don't appreciate the credit for the language, but I took language that's already in section K, I think the C4 district has some similar language to this, and I used that as a model.
That makes good zoning.
Right, exactly, to be kind of consistent.
Yeah.
And then the numbered items were ones that I just threw in there as well to add, add the criteria, and then, again, with my notes, this time in red, suggesting maybe there's more criteria, and I was just kind of throwing that out for discussion, and I wasn't at the meeting, and so they, they just left it, left it as it was, so it ended up in here like this.
What's nice about your notes is it helps for citizens of the town to understand, you know?
That's true, that's true.
And for the board to understand.
Well, sure, it helps everyone, right? So I don't, I don't mind them, I think that's okay, especially, you know, it's EG, for example, you know?
Mm-hmm.
Except, for example, as a, as a regulatory term, it's not the best, and it wasn't intended, it's not the best form of regulation, because you don't want anybody to interpret, for example, to mean only these examples.
Right.
So, you know, including but not limited to is the regulatory way of saying, for example.
I see.
For example, the way you and I, the way, for example, is meant, might be thought of.
Yeah, so actually, it's probably not a bad idea to just leave that note as part of this, but with that, with that change in language.
And get rid of et cetera.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So are people saying that they want it, they want this illustrated as part of the, was that part of the task, Jeff, to illustrate this one?
Well, this one is not very prescriptive, less opposed to the other one.
Yeah, you can't really illustrate it, because it's...
It is what it is.
Yeah, it's like everything can change, but it depends on what you're, what you're showing us, and, you know, it's just speculative until someone comes up with a plan.
I, I like the concept. I like the concept of flexibility but predictability, and this is, this is, this is, I think this is good for everybody.
Okay, Gino, next.
Well, that one's just a straight changing the minimum lot size outside the business core from 8,000 to 4,000 square feet.
But what happens, what's the 1-2-3 at the end of that? What's the asterisk? What's the asterisk in, what's the 1-2-3?
Were you talking about the...
Oh, the asterisk, that's the planned, planned multi-lot development.
Oh.
That's an existing asterisk.
Oh, okay. Oh, sorry, that's something else.
Okay.
But what is, what does this do? When you change the minimum lot size from eight to four, what does it do?
Well, that's what we're working on to illustrate.
This is the one, okay.
This is what we're illustrating.
So let's go back to the beginning.
Well, there's, there's one more, just quick, quickly, is the floodplain map.
Yeah, floodplain's in there.
Yeah.
Okay.
And we're going to be submitting it. Article, it doesn't say who, but is it going to be submitted by us?
I would think so, that the floodplain...
We meant to.
Okay, so this was, this was added since we last met at our request, and I guess the selectmen, I think they're going to discuss this and hopefully get it in the warrant, but we don't know for sure, right?
That's what, isn't that what you said Marion just said here?
Yeah, but I'm not sure it's certain yet, but, yeah, okay.
Well, the floodplain, the whole floodplain article passed pretty easily when we had it. So, I mean, all this is, is the math that goes along with it, so there's no reason why the board of selectmen would...
There was some, there was a little pushback from the people near the airport.
Oh, the people near the airport, yeah, well, that's true, there was a little bit.
There was some confusion and some allegations.
This board did a lot of work to get it to that point.
And you didn't have to get up and defend it, so...
Yeah, yeah, there was defending going on. So the illustrations, the work, is going to be around this article at the base of A, page eight, and what else, Jeff?
I'm sorry, Andrea.
Page five.
You, you asked the, you asked the guys...
Oh, so just, just go back to...
Do the, do work on which articles?
I think, just taking it from page four, just as we started, page four. So the first one, that's the one you're going to redline?
Yeah.
The affordable housing, right?
Yeah, only two.
Okay, yep, that's fine.
Are you changing some of the language that was in there originally? Oh, that's original language that was in there.
Yeah, but see, when, see, when you, you say down here, the first sentence says, "All affordable construction inhabitants shall be situated within the development so as not to be less desirable locations," okay? And then, the next two added sentences speak of, of, we might change the location. So I'm just asking to strike within the development so that the first, the first sentence speaks, speaks to its performance standard, that the units, the units rehabilit, the affordable units should be in no less desirable locations than the market rate units.
Well, we're trying to tell them to put them in the subdivision.
But you do say that... But you do say that when you say, when you say definitively in the next sentence, "they shall be located within the subdivision unless otherwise waived." Shall, unless otherwise waived
Yeah.
Speaks to the preference. So you can't, so within the subdivision just become, within the development up above just becomes a inconsistent
I agree with it, Steve. I do agree with what she's saying.
Yeah. It's, you, "they shall be in the subdivision unless we waive it."
I don't have any problem with that.
And then with, but, so, so you get rid of the location until you say it clearly. That's my red line.
Okay. Can you capture that, Gino? You got it?
I just, I just struck out.
Just struck out.
I struck out within the development.
Okay.
And then, and then it doesn't matter, because I don't want to push my, you know, I want to use all my chits, but the last sentence, "the affordable units can't be replaced within the subdivision unless extenuating circumstances," is, strikes me more as a qualifier of the next paragraph, where you say, you, so the first paragraph citing, if you ended it with, with "we might waive it," then everything about, then that thing, the sentence, "the affordable units cannot be replaced within the subdivision unless extenuating circumstances." I think, I thought that was more a qualifier for, for down below. I thought if you moved that sentence to "they are," it would make more sense, personally. I just think the last sentence of the first paragraph makes more sense if you add it to the last sentence of the second paragraph. That's
Would you have a look at the pretty doodle?
Not a big deal.
All right. Let's move on.
All right. Next article. So, I haven't asked Tom and Gino to do anything in particular for the next article. The next article, they are going to be, and have actually begun trying to express that in terms of, you know, what does it mean? And that's specific to the, the core. The next article, I haven't asked Tom and Gino to do anything relative to that article.
I, I'm not sure what it means. I'm not sure what the implications are of it. Should I think about it some more? Would it become clear to me?
65 percent?
Well, quickly, it's just, if someone has a single parcel of land and they want to build a commercial building with residential above, they have no need for a PMLD because it's just one lot. This would, this would allow them to do it, still subject to site plan review, but they wouldn't have to artificially create a PMLD in order to do that type of development.
Because you can always put "commercial" in B-1.
Right.
Okay. I'm sorry. I didn't, I just didn't get it.
Okay. The next article. Nothing specific aside from perhaps, perhaps some language in terms of mezzanine, so we can discuss that as part of the public hearing.
Only if the board is concerned about that. The language is easy.
Yeah. Let's just have it available, or you can have it at your ready, okay?
Looking into page eight, right?
Okay. So, the next article, nothing specific there. The last article on page six, nothing there. Top of page seven, nothing for that article. Next one, nothing. Andrea, you're going to redline?
Jeff, I don't know. I was speaking to the chair of the, I'm sorry, the advisory committee. He was expressing some concern about this. I don't know whether we want to
Which, which one?
The Kelly, no, the Kelly property, about how big it was, what it would look like, and things like that.
The graphic. He needs the graphic.
Yeah, yeah. So I don't know whether we, we have to do a map. I don't know whether we want to try to lay out
EDC should have a map to go by, at least. We created
Well, Tom, you, you may have that in that document
Electronically, probably.
We have, we have the zoning map.
No, but EDC's got, has got
The document you got
Yes, yeah. Well, there are build-out analysis there, but they aren't updated to the current language.
Yeah, okay.
So, I don't know whether that's
Okay.
Worth it or not.
Well, do, do what you have to, to ensure that, you know, we're prepared for the public hearing.
I think, I think Greg's is where we have it.
Yeah.
There should be, yeah. We should have that map. EDC show.
Yeah. And we have, we have that.
So you can ask Bob Nekedem's. Yeah, that's the one.
Yes, and it's all, yeah.
That's the one. Yeah. Okay.
Nothing else on that.
Andrea, you're going to redline the next one, right?
Yep.
I know some comment about emergency vehicle access or something, right? And which brings us to the last two. Why don't we focus on the last one? Because I think, I think what I'm hearing
I think we've covered that second to the last.
Yeah. So, just to, to go back to some comments that I made earlier, where I've challenged Tom and Gino to express in very practical terms what this means, okay? So, I would like them to continue that work, and we'll certainly have the discussion and let the chips fall where they may. I mean, it's a transparent process. I know we're all committed to that, and that's what it'll be. So, you agree?
I do. And, and I think, I think that the, going through this individually, I think you got a sense from everybody that there's only two, there's only two warrant articles that are giving people concern.
Okay.
Okay.
And that's consistent with what my
What you heard.
Prior understanding, you know, based on the last meeting, and it's consistent with the conversations I've had with Tom and Gino, to what I've asked for them to do.
And again, everyone's, I think, in, in favor and supportive of the intent. It just doesn't seem that the execution of it is really potentially meeting that intent well.
Yeah. I, I think that's very clear articulation.
Okay.
And that, and I, and when Steve, if I can put words in your mouth, you said
Please don't. Okay, okay. Go ahead.
Hopefully, it's 25 before 12.
No, no. What I, what I heard Steve, what I heard Steve say earlier is that, that any, any problem he was expressing with the bottom of, of A was, was, he, you could capture the intent of the article at the bottom of A by having the article at the top of A. Is that what you said?
That's exactly what I said, yeah.
And I, I can understand why Steve would feel that way. That's why I wanted to get it back here in context. This may not be needed when you have that.
Okay. But, because the zoning bylaw study committee is multiple boards and committees, and is not just a planning board forum, I, I think we have to follow through on what they've recommended and do the due diligence, and if that's in fact what the outcome is, so be it.
Well, it's going on the warrant. We have to have our hearing. We don't have a, we don't have a choice on that.
But it's not just
Oh, yeah, does it say if we recommend it or not?
It's also preparing for those discussions.
Right.
It's our, it's our duty to, you know, ensure that we're, you know, informed and that we're in a position, or at least these gentlemen are in a position to inform the people that really matter, the residents of the town, who are going to be voting on this at town meeting.
There's a likely chance if the advisory board says, "we recommend it," or "we don't recommend it," that one of us may be asked to stand up and say, "why? Why do you recommend it, or why do you not recommend it?" I mean, it's not a
That's why, when you call, you said the advisory board, and that goes back to the, I know it's late, that goes back to the earlier discussion that started this, that was really premature. We really had to have this going through the individual thing. But we, what we, the conversation started with, we were giving, there's a value to give the advisory board, who know less about zoning than we do, some feedback before they make a recommendation. Some feedback. And it might be hold off
They're going to get a status report. That's what they're going to get.
Regardless, if it's before or after they make their decision, we'll go on the books.
We don't want to shortchange the process. I'll be in great shape to speak at town meeting. I'll be just getting off a flight from Taiwan.
Oh, geez, Taiwan. Nice.
Talk about zoning.
Taiwan?
I may be as coherent as I've ever been.
Is it going to be one, like a straight shot? What, what time zone will you be in?
I don't even know. Okay.
They'll still be in their time zone.
Which is what, four hours behind us?
Taiwan?
Taiwan's
14.
Yeah.